All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the November 11th study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Maldun is currently absent.
Thank you. All right, so our current business, first off, we'd like to get clarif-- would anyone up on the dais like clarification on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll go right to our first item here, Mr. Brad White of Operation Christmas. Please, welcome to come-- oh, there he is. Sorry, Mr. White, we're ready for you.
Military elves are on their way and he's waiting for them. If we could just delay that one for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can I-- Leilani, we-- our next one's gonna be pretty long, so do you have any sense of how, I mean, we could wait? Okay.
I should've told them military time. Suppose, Mayor, you could also take public comments on the item if you'd like prior to us doing the actual presentation, and then we would also need a motion to move forward with the presentation.
Okay. Would anyone in the public like to come and comment on this item? Seeing none.
I move that we move forward.
Do I have a second?
Do we have a second? All right.
Any objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously, six zero, and I will be right back. They are moving double time now, so.
This microphone or this microphone?
Either one.
As a legal disclaimer, this is not an endorsement. This is just sharing with the wonderful city of Newport Beach. Hello, City Council, thank you guys for your patience. My name is Brad White, and we've been doing a Christmas drive with the city, I believe it started in 2005, 2006 with Levon, and it basically is a drive that helps folks support their local military and families for Christmas. We've been collecting toys and also helping folks to know how to support their military through sponsoring their unit Christmas time, Christmas parties with their families, and it's a way to show folks how to support their local military. Excuse me. The city has been very supportive of these efforts. I haven't spoke to a city council meeting since the old building, so I am long overdue to say thank you to you, your great department with the City Clerk's Office that I see every year that wants us to help support our military, especially during, I believe it's now seventeen years our country's been at war. We are here to say thank you to the wonderful citizens. I have some awards for you, but before we do that, I wanted to present something that I thought was special that we don't do for everybody. The only folks that have this is Barrett Jackson in Scottsdale and President Steve Davis for all they do for our wonderful military and their veterans. And if you guys could put that, put that down, we're gonna grab that framed, it's We felt there was no better city to give this to than the wonderful city of Newport Beach, California. It is a flag of honor. This American flag was signed by members of the United States, military representing our US Army, US Navy, US Marine Corps, US Coast Guard, and US Air Force. They have served and fought to protect America and liberate the oppressed and enslaved throughout the world. The heroes who signed this flag served and fought during World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Grenada, Lebanon, Panama, Desert Storm, Somalia, Bosnia, Afghanistan, and Iraq. On behalf of the officers and members of Yellow Ribbon America, our campaign for America's military and their families, and our nation's Heroes Foundation, we do hereby award and thank the city and citizens of Newport Beach, California, USA for their outstanding support of America's military and their families during wartime. And that's our heartfelt support, and it's heartfelt support of America's veterans presented at this November 13th City Council Meeting 2018 in Newport Beach, California. I apologize for being out of breath. We have an award to give to the city besides giving this, and we have a plaque that goes with this if you guys would like to put it somewhere for the citizens of Newport Beach and those visiting and doing business in this city. Every year, we sponsor a lot of unit Christmas parties with your help and others. We're doing probably about between 25 to 30 this year, majority in California. The other states would be Utah, Nevada, Arizona, Texas, and I think Washington State. But we have a special Christmas party that'll send us to Leilani to invite the city council members that, I don't know if you're aware of, but Knott's Berry Farm is the, one of the few companies that does amusement parks that lets military and veterans in for free and up to one family member, so we wanted to do something special for those that actually support our military and families. We're working on Mickey Mouse, but Mickey Mouse currently, I think, Danny, what, $5 off if you guys take your family to Disneyland, something like that. But this is a party that we're gonna have, Snoopy, I had it, Santa Claus, and it's gonna be for the 163rd Orange Company, Tustin, Irvine, which Danny originally was a member of, he's now over at Joint Force Training Base Los Alamos. And we're basically gonna provide food, toys, gift cards, and have a really great time, and we'd love for you guys to come out. The city of Newport Beach had a mayor and a couple of council members support the National Guard Unit that was out in Fullerton where they had no support from the city at that time, and they had suffered a lot of casualties. So basically, we would love to have you guys there and be our guests and be with them at the families and be able to see what you guys have been supporting all this time. Other than that, I'm gonna have them present this to you guys, I don't know who would like to take it, and then also give the award for the Christmas drive, and that way we could take pictures. And then I have a little pin with a yellow ribbon, which is our symbol. That means until our loved ones that are far away come home again.
And while they take the picture, I also want to announce the donations will be accepted in the City Clerk's Office and at Oasis Senior Center from November 23rd to December 30th.
Did you count some members? There's seven of them? This is a yellow ribbon with her beautiful American flag that symbolizes that when our loved ones are gone until they come home, that they're in our thoughts and prayers, because that's what we do, we're Americans. And I've had a chance to meet a lot of folks that are from other countries and other militaries, and they say, "There's nobody that loves your flag the way you do, and there's no one that supports your military like you do." And as some of you may know, it wasn't always like that. In Vietnam, there wasn't that support, and we made a promise it'll never happen again. And thank God for the good folks in Orange County and the rest of America, we've done a pretty good job. So God bless you guys. I hope you have a blessed holiday, Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do and all the hard work, and especially thank you for coming to today and presenting that to us. Thank you very much. Good work. Okay, second item on our study session will be the sidewalk vendor ordinance. Would staff like to present?
Yep. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and City Council Members. I am Simone Jurges, I'm your Community Development Director. Tonight, we're gonna talk about a new sidewalk vending program that we're gonna share with you. Just to go back a little bit, just a little context and why we're here tonight, our current municipal code prohibits commercial activity in our public right-of-way. So let's talk about sidewalk vending, and we may have seen these individuals by our peninsulas, either Baboa Peninsula or Newport Peninsula. In the evening hours on a summer night, you see them kinda shooting these kinda lighted devices up in the air, and they twirl up in the air, and they're trying to sell you these toys. Well, that's actually prohibited activity in our municipal code. We don't allow commercial businesses on our public right-of-way, our boardwalks, our public sidewalks. What's recently happened is at the state level, the state has passed a new Senate Bill, Senate Bill 946, which now allows, preempt cities and now allows actual sidewalk vending. And it's really in the context of the entrepreneurial spirit of individuals trying to make a living. So now we have a new Senate Bill that preempts cities from prohibiting these activities. The, the small caveat in this is that cities can continue to regulate if we have concerns with regards to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And as we all know, Newport Beach is a visitor destination. We have a lot of people on our public sidewalks. So what we're gonna share with you today, and I'm gonna hand it over to Ben Zabita, our Associate Planner, is that our actual program for restricting sidewalk vending in specific areas, but allowing them in other areas in conformance to the Senate Bill 946. Right now is our just presentation on the program, and then tonight is the actual ordinance that talks about the new chapter which creates the program, and that's for your consideration this evening. So also with us is Monique Neverett, who's gonna, from our Revenue Division, she's handling the permitting side, so we'll be happy, each one of us, to answer those questions. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Ben Zabita, please.
Afternoon, Mayor, City Council Members. Ben Zabita with the Planning Division. I'm gonna try to keep this as concise as possible. So I'm gonna start off with, what is a sidewalk vendor? And this definition is pulled straight from state law. What I wanna emphasize is that this is a vendor who is operating on a public sidewalk or pedestrian path, so keep that in mind as I go through the presentation. As Simone said, the city's code currently prohibits sidewalk vending. With new state law, the city cannot prohibit sidewalk vending, however, we can place a permit program, which is what we're here to talk about today. This does go into effect January 1st, 2019, a pretty quick turnaround there. So state law in a nutshell allows cities to place certain restrictions that are related to health, safety, and welfare. It talks to things specifically such as limiting hours. I would highlight that it cannot be unduly restrictive. Also, we are able to prohibit stationary vendors, and that is a vendor that is static, not moving, within exclusively residential zones. And also a highlight is that we can restrict but not prohibit operations in public parks. So the new municipal code--
I have a quick question. On that last, on that, is that okay?
Yes, please.
Okay. On that last slide, would you mind going back?
Sure.
So you'll probably get there, but one of the, one of the things is limit hours, and I was, when I was reading through the, the new ordinance, one of the things is, in the residential areas at least, it goes up from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and the reason for it is because we already allow solicitors up through 9:00 PM. Honestly, I was a little surprised to find out that we allow solicitors in the 8 o'clock hour. Is there a reason for that? Because that, that might be one of those things I might wanna come back and revisit as a separate item, because I'd be a little surprised. I mean, if I lived in on the port streets, I'd be a little surprised if someone was knocking on my door trying to sell magazines at 8:30. And frankly, there are certain areas of our city where people might be asleep at 8:30.
No, I think that's a very good point, and that's something I'm probably gonna have to revisit, but since the solicitations allowed under the ordinance during those hours, we felt it was appropriate to kinda mirror that with this ordinance. But do you think that's an area that we're gonna have to go back and re-study and analyze to see whether that's appropriate or not?
Yeah, I'd like, I would like to do that on future. I just, I genuinely was surprised to find out that we allow soliciting in the 8 o'clock hour. Anyway, thanks.
Thanks for your question. So going forward, the city's new chapter would allow sidewalk vending with the intent that it really does not interfere with public health, safety, and welfare as, again, allowed by the state law. So I've highlighted a few intents here and purposes of this chapter. I won't read them to you, but just to highlight a few, it's really to allow reasonable access for using sidewalks, maintaining the sidewalks, while also ensuring there's adequate access for disabled persons in compliance with the ADA law. So I'll give you an overview of the program, and I'll delve into each of these specifically. So permit is required. We also have locational restrictions and separation requirements that will prohibit sidewalk vendors from locating themselves in certain areas where there are obstructions in the sidewalk to make sure that there's adequate access, and they're not precluding use and enjoyment of the sidewalks. So as I said, we do require a permit, which will help ensure that the vendors are complying with the program regulations. There will also be a permit fee assessed with that permit that will be coming to you soon at a future council meeting for adoption. That is the fee that is. And this checklist is attached as Attachment C to your staff report if you wanna look at it more closely. As far as hours, as Councilmember O'Neill touched on, in non-residential areas, we're recommending 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. Again, it can't be unduly restrictive, and that's commensurate with our business operation hours in most commercial districts. It also is, at 10:00 PM is an earlier time, which would be friendly to mixed-use districts where you may have residential nearby. I'd also add that residential areas are regulated differently with the 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM daily hour, which we touched upon, is consistent with the solicitation hours. So there are a couple of distinctions in this chapter. There are prohibited locations that are outright, prohibited outright due to unique circumstances. As Simone touched on, there are a huge influx of visitors to the city during the summer months in particular, which mean that there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, and we don't want that pedestrian traffic to be impeded, such that there's a health and safety concern. There are also prohibited locations due to distancing requirements, which, again, I'll go into this a little bit further, but that's like, how far would they need to be from a street intersection or from a fire hydrant to make sure that there's no impediment to a firefighter needing to access that hydrant? So just to go over the prohibited locations, here's a list of them for you, but in general, you have the Oceanfront Walk, which is spanning all the way down to G Street, I believe, from 36th Street. You have Babo Island Walking Trail. On Babo Village, you have between Adams and A Street along East Babo Boulevard, Marine Avenue on Babo Island, and East Coast Highway through the Cronin Omar area between Avocado and Hazel. And lastly, the Civic Center, which is where we are today. Just to kinda put that into perspective spatially, here's what it looks like. So on Babo Island, and I'm gonna use my laser pointer here for you, so Marine Avenue would be prohibited. The Bayfront Walkway, which runs around the perimeter of Babo Island, would also be prohibited. Alley's are prohibited. They're usually, you know, 10 feet wide, narrow, and used for vehicle. They're not considered a pedestrian pathway or sidewalk. And then 200 feet from any fire station, obviously to prevent any sort of obstruction if a fire engine needs to exit that facility quickly. So where could it be allowed? There, there are, state law precludes the city from prohibiting roaming vendors in residential areas, so roaming vendors could be allowed throughout the residential areas as long as adequate clearances are provided around them. In Babo Village, again, between East Babo Boulevard, or on East Babo Boulevard rather, between Adams and A Street, the Babo Pier, Oceanfront Boardwalk, alleys, parking lots, and beaches. Whereas restricted areas are concerned, and again, these are areas that could be allowed, but there'd be restrictions. I'm not gonna read over them, but you'll see a list there. So again, there are potential locations that we'd have to take a closer look at if someone were to apply for a permit there.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. When we're talking about beaches, obviously we have the ones that we control. What about the state beaches? Like Crystal Cove or?
The law only applied to basically sidewalks and pathways, so it doesn't apply to beaches at all, so you won't have any vending on the beaches.
Oops, thank you, Mayor. With the prohibited areas, restricted areas, and then you'll tell us, I'm sure, in the next slide or two where it is permitted, how are we going to enforce this?
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon. That is going to be the, our biggest challenge. One thing to keep in mind is that to be a street vendor, you need to have a permit. So if you are, if our code enforcement staff approaches a street vendor, the first thing we're going to ask is, do they have a permit? And if they don't have a permit, then it's, it's an issue for us, and we have a citation program for that.
Okay, next question. You mentioned, or Ben mentioned, the high influx of visitors we have in the summer months, weekdays as well, of course, as weekends. Do we have code enforcement working on weekends?
We do not.
We do not?
No.
So for all intents and purposes, there would be no enforcement on weekends?
Not at this time, correct.
Okay.
Good questions, Councilmember Dixon.
Sorry, Mr. Avery.
I assume you're gonna get to a slide that gives the dimensions of a cart, sort of the sizes and all that, what's the max that can be out there?
I can talk about that. I don't have a slide, but since you asked, the ordinance proposes to allow four foot by four foot be the maximum footprint for the cart and the vendor. So in essence, in any situation, there should be at least four feet clear for people to traverse around that vendor.
Music?
It has to comply with the noise ordinance, so it refers to Chapter 10, so they would have to make sure that they are complying.
Uh huh. And a vendor would be typically one person with a cart, not two or three or?
It could be multiple, however, they are required to stay within five feet of the cart.
Oh, is that right? So they can't go up to a door at a residence?
Correct.
Thank you.
Herrdman.
Just a question about the use of the terminology Babo Island Walking Trail. Is that an arbitrary assignment to that? Because it's for years been known as the Babo Island Boardwalk, and I wouldn't wanna create any confusion on the part of vendors. Some people consider the entire island a walking trail. So I would, I would suggest that it be labeled the Babo Island Boardwalk, and that the Grand Canal Boardwalk also be designated as a separate boardwalk from the Babo Island Boardwalk. And I think you need to include both Babo Islands in your, in your wording. You just, you don't want vendors taking advantage of you, you know, saying, "Well, you didn't, you didn't say I couldn't be on the little island."
I think in part the reason they use different terminology than the boardwalk is so there wouldn't be confusion.
With the peninsula boardwalk?
With the peninsula boardwalk. But I think you do raise some good points, but that's sort of why a different term was used. And it does encompass more than kinda just the edges of Babo Island, you know, it does go along the Grand Canal as well. So I think that that's the primary reason that a different term was used, but I think those are good points.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Neill.
So one of the questions I had was, when, when a code enforcement officer would walk up to someone and then ask, "Hey, do you have a license?", wouldn't, wouldn't it be easier if there was just a display requirement? Because, I mean, when I go to New York, don't they have those on the side of the hot dog carts, and then, oh, go ahead, Aaron, am I, is there a prohibition on that?
So we basically require them to have it posted on the card or on their person?
Oh, I may have missed that.
Depending on how they're vending.
Okay, all right, that answers that.
Mr. Dixon.
Mayor, you mentioned with Mr. Avery's question about noise, so conceivably, walking down our residential streets, we could have multiple, there's no maximum, there's no cap on the number of street vendors that could be roaming our streets in the permitted areas. And the noise ordinance would be 55, so suppose each vendor is, it's like the good humor man, I guess, could be playing their music, boombox, is that, I mean, that's within the noise limit?
I think you're really dealing with some speech type of issues there. I know that when the ice cream vendors with the trucks have heavily litigated-- I know that when the ice cream vendors with the trucks have heavily litigated this area. I think we've done what we can do as far as the noise goes, but you basically can't distinguish different types of speech. It's pretty difficult to do that. But I think you're right. We are requiring them to basically comply at the noise levels that anyone else would have to comply with, though. So we did think about that and take that into consideration.
Well, I would say that a truck, a Good Humor ice cream truck, whatever, is very different than, and the number of vehicles in an area is limited. I mean, you only really see one truck in one certain radius. Carts, you can, there could be multiple carts going up and down the streets, and their respective amplified music, among other things. But I'm, it's just, dawning on me, there's no limit on the number of carts per street, is there?
There are separation requirements.
Well, 400 feet or something?
It's 100 feet.
100 feet?
Correct.
Anyway, I mean, in my mind's eye, I'm envisioning a cacophony of music in our residential streets on a busy summer evening, up to 8:00 p.m. or 9:00 p.m.
I think you do raise some good points. I mean, this is a new area for us. Like we said, they're previously banned. We've done our best to comply with what the state law requirements are and give people the most opportunity while taking into account, you know, some of the high-density issues that we have. But I think this is probably going to be something we're going to need to roll out and then probably revisit at some point if we're seeing, you know, issues like you're raising where you have major concerns because you have so many vendors in one area. So I think that these are all good points and something we have to monitor very carefully.
All right, thank you. No other speakers up here?
Okay. And then one thing I'd like to mention for Councilmember Hurdman, and for all your benefit, there is a definitions section in the ordinance that clearly defines each of those areas. So even though it's a foreign term, maybe, or not maybe, what's used out in Balboa Island, there is a definition that very clearly states Little Balboa Island, et cetera. So just to make sure that we're all at ease there. Okay, so again, in Balboa Village, I've pretty much covered that. Looking forward to Civic Center. So it does preclude sidewalk vending from the entirety of the Civic Center property, meaning the building at 100 Civic Center Drive, as well as the parking lot areas. But it could be allowed in the Civic Center Park, as well as along Avocado Avenue, MacArthur Boulevard on the west side, and, again, roaming vendors in the residential area. So Cronin Omar, again, along Coast Highway between Avocado and Hazel, alleys, parking lots, beaches, and 200 feet from a fire station. So it could be allowed in the Grant Howell Park along the pathway. However, as we know, there's a temporary fire station there today, so I don't know if that's a viable option. And then, again, roaming vendors in residential areas with appropriate clearances. And then last example is McFadden Square, which, as we know, is a hotspot for the tourists. It's also the location of lifeguard headquarters, so care was taken in the ordinance to ensure that there's adequate buffer around the lifeguard headquarters to allow for appropriate access in the event of an emergency.
And just to jump in there, I think that that's really especially something that we looked at carefully and worked with the fire chief on as far as the distancing from lifeguard headquarters. There's a lot of vehicles that come in and out of that area that are associated with lifeguard activities. So the buffer there seemed very appropriate, given the amount of activity that happens around those lifeguard stations.
Thanks, Aaron. And then, again, to go into some areas that may be allowed, there are some arterial streets that could have areas where sidewalk vending could be conducted. I won't read through them, but you can see them there. And some things we've already kind of touched on with your good questions. So there are additional restrictions in place, so we wouldn't allow a sidewalk vendor within 200 feet of any police fire station, lifeguard tower, headquarters. And then, as we drill down, within 100 feet of other sidewalk vendors, which does kind of address the concentration issue that Ms. Dixon touched on, they do have to be separated from other vendors. 100 feet from any public marina, as well as 100 feet from any emergency service personnel who are conducting their duties. And taking a step further, we also require distancing from fire hydrants. Any non-residential building entrance or exit, that kind of touches on ADA or state law for accessibility purposes. And then also, within 25 feet of any public use item, such as a trash can or bench, and that's to make sure that people can use and enjoy those public amenities as they're intended to. Touches on welfare. Lastly, I would state that the sidewalks must be eight feet in width for a stationary vendor. Again, that's to allow adequate clearance around them. And then, interestingly, the sidewalk vendors can also not be allowed in a public park where we have an exclusive agreement with one concessionaire. So since I mentioned parks, what's the restriction in public parks? Well, we have passive parks, which are more scenic in nature, where people go to enjoy the view, maybe not do extraneous activities. And then we have active parks, which are, have play equipment and ballfields, and there are sporting events and people engaging in activities, which is what they're intended for. So vendors are allowed on parks, on sidewalks that are eight feet or wider, if they're stationary. And then there's also allowance for roaming vendors who have the appropriate clearances of four feet around them. But the main prohibition is not allowed to approach persons who are in a passive park enjoying the view, because that detracts from the use of that park as it is intended. Same thing with an active park. As people are engaging in sporting events, you don't want to be interrupted by a vendor coming up and trying to sell you their wares. And same thing with a spectator engaging and watching that sporting event or activity. We don't want them to be bothered by a sidewalk vendor that takes away and detracts from the use of that park. So in terms of enforcement, as we kind of touched on, we will require a conspicuous display of the permit, and city officials are allowed to inspect at any time to make sure that that vendor is complying with all the operational standards. Violations are enforced through administrative fines, so it's not a criminal activity, it's a minor infraction through administrative process. And there is an appeals framework included. That concludes the high-level overview. You do have the staff report along with the ordinance, and we are available for any questions you might have. Thanks.
Mr. Hurdman.
During the annual holiday boat parade, we have vendors on the Balboa Island Boardwalk selling those illuminated necklaces, hot chocolate. They don't have carts that they're moving. They've got these, these wares on their body. This would be prohibited, then?
That would be a roaming vendor?
A roaming vendor.
Yeah, because they don't have a cart. They're not stationary. They're moving.
So they're okay?
Because they can be moved if they need to. You know, they can move wherever they like. They're free to move.
Okay.
Mr. Avery?
So there's, I mean, no limit within reason. What, basically, anything could be sold? Any item? Food items? Used clothing? Could a cart be cooking hamburgers and hot dogs?
Sure. Yeah, you can sell food, and there is a limitation on what you can and can't sell. We can't sell alcohol, for instance, or tobacco products. So there are limitations within the ordinance that prohibit certain items from being sold.
Barbecuing while they're going?
There's also limitations on heating sources for cooking.
Right, that's what I'm getting at. So propane in a bottle attached to the cart?
Not allowed.
Not allowed. So nothing like a explosive?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just to emphasize that point, part of the reason to restrict some of those items like propane, there've been some carts that have blown up in the past where caused significant damage. So we're looking at it from that perspective as well.
Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you. So eight feet, did you say, is the minimum width of the sidewalk?
Correct, for a stationary vendor.
So are the sidewalks in Balboa Island, for example, are they eight feet wide on the residential streets?
I don't know for sure that all of them are not. One thing that makes this tough is that Public Works does not maintain an inventory of all the sidewalk widths. I think that's very difficult for them to do. But in general, they are sprinkled throughout the city. A few examples, there are some in Cronin Omar, there are some in Balboa Village. However, they have public use items, benches, trash receptacles, bike racks, things that will prevent sidewalk vendors from vending there in some instances.
So in your chart to re-identify the streets that would be permitted, are you saying you've already ascertained that the sidewalk width is eight feet?
Correct, by rudimentary measurement on GIS, yes.
I see, okay. And, let me ask one other thing.
Just to jump in briefly while you're thinking of your next question, I think that most of those areas are residential anyway, so you wouldn't have a stationary vendor there, but you could have roaming vendors on some of those smaller streets on Balboa Island.
What would be the fine if someone is violating the ordinance?
I'll get there right now. So the slide there has fines for first-time offenders, as well as second and multiple offenders within a one-year period. So you'll see that there's any violation, which is a smaller fine, and then there is no permit fine. So if I'm operating without a permit, I would be fined $250 for my first infraction. Furthermore, if I do have a permit and I'm a continuous violator, the finance director could revoke my permit, subject to appeal if I didn't agree with him.
Would the enforcement work on weekends? So someone who, I guess, just a resident passerby, who is familiar with the law, could take a picture of the permit? And then would there be retroactive enforcement?
So, Councilmember Dixon, we do have public safety. Our PD officers are available. So if there is a need for enforcement officers to go out, they would go out and they could issue that citation.
Okay, with all that they have to do on the peninsula on a busy summer weekend, them to chase down carts that are speeding on our residential streets or whatever they're doing, I could see that's going to be hard to enforce. But anyway, okay, thanks.
Mr. Hurdman.
And the, I'm not going to use the word urgency, but kind of the hurry behind this is because this goes into effect on January 1st. And if we're a city that wants to adopt rules and regulations regarding this practice, we have to have those adopted by January 1st. Is that correct?
No, that's not the case. So as of January 1st, you basically, if you don't have something on the books, some kind of regulatory program, then, you know, people get to operate with no restrictions. So...
Isn't that what I just said?
I think there's a little bit of a difference. And maybe, and maybe it's my not hearing it correctly, but I thought what you were saying is if you didn't have one on the books, could you not adopt one in the future?
That's correct, Aaron.
Yeah. And that's not the case. You could adopt one in March or April or May, or whenever you wanted. But our current restrictions that basically ban it from, you know, any public property would not be enforceable after January 1st.
Got it.
Mr. Avery?
You may want to consider setting an upper limit for when to revoke a permit as, instead of making it nebulous, like three violations permits suspended for a certain length of time or something.
I see what you're saying. And in the appeals framework, there is, sorry, not the appeals, the revocation framework, it talks about four offenses? So there is a number set.
Okay, great, thanks.
Mr. Hurdman, yeah. Go for it.
Just one last thing. I did take a look at the ordinance, and on page 1324, it does refer, sidewalk vendors shall not engage in sidewalk vending activities at the following locations. And it does say the Balboa Island Walking Trail. I don't want to beat this to death, but nobody's going to know what that is, the Balboa Island Walking Trail. That's a totally foreign term. So you might want to consider making it boardwalk. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill.
You know, Jeff has a point there. I'm wondering, is there, is there something else we could call it, other than the boardwalk, Jeff? That would, no. Yeah, I don't know it other than the boardwalk either.
Balboa Island certainly distinguishes itself from Peninsula.
I guess we could, we could change the definition term to basically be something of the nature of Balboa Island Boardwalk, and then, and then make it, you know, the Peninsula Boardwalk. Maybe adding those additional terms would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm with Jeff on that one. I think he's right. That's, I don't think anyone outside of our, I don't think anyone inside our city, frankly, would understand quite as much. Yeah, I'm with him. I agree with Jeff on that one.
Mrs. Dixon.
Well, just to follow up on that, I am familiar with how, I don't know if you got these terms off Google Maps, or the state did, for example, because Google Maps identifies the Balboa Peninsula as the walking trail, the Newport-Balboa Walking Trail. And nobody would know what that is, certainly nobody in Newport Beach. And actually, the city manager, previous city manager and staff has numerous times, as I understand it, tried to have Google correct that misidentification, and it's been unsuccessful. If you go to Google Maps on the, what we know as a Balboa, or, excuse me, the Peninsula Boardwalk or Oceanfront Boardwalk, it is called the Balboa Peninsula Walking Trail or something like that. Bicycle, it's a bicycle trail.
So what we could do is call, under definition number two, call it the Balboa Island Boardwalk, and then change number four to just be the Oceanfront Boardwalk, and then change that kind of throughout, if that, if that'd be more helpful.
Mr. Avery?
So I imagine there's, is every city in the state of California grappling with this right now?
Yeah, it's recent state law, so there are several cities that, to our knowledge, I think Simone was talking to Laguna Beach, and we're just ahead of them, so we may be one of the first that's doing this in the state.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. So just, I think for the public's edification, what was the process? What, obviously, there was a lot of staff time in this, figuring this out, and sort of new territory and coming up with these things, and obviously, working with the city attorney to sort of stay within the spirit and the law of the whole thing, right?
Thank you, Councilmember Avery. This is one of the biggest projects we've actually touched upon. You know, we had to include almost every single department, so we had, you know, if you think about it, we had a conference room with 20 people inside the conference room talking about what are some of the concerns, what are some of the possibilities of drafting a new ordinance? And, you know, I got to hand it to Ben and Monique and Public Works staff, did a lot of heavy lifting. And also, I have to give credit to Aaron and Armin. They did a lot of work on this ordinance, too. So it was, it was a huge effort to put this together.
Yeah, I'm sure it was, and I commend you for that and the rest of the staff. And it, you know, it's hard to get it perfect right out the gate, and so I think we all understand that this will come back, as you mentioned, Aaron, about, for a revisit. You know, we're certainly open to that and hearing from residents, and maybe that revisit gets speeded up, depending on sort of the feedback we're getting. Thank you.
Dixon.
Just a quick question. When this was going through the legislative process, were we aware of it? I mean, we can't follow every bill, but who was pushing this? The Street Vendor Association?
So this primarily came about because there was some issues with Los Angeles and how they were interacting with street vendors. And this, you know, basically, the state, some of the people up at the state level didn't like the way that LA was proposing to deal with these issues, and so they moved forth with this proposed Senate bill. I guess it's not proposed, it is, is the Senate bill.
Are you finished with your report?
Sir.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I see no other comments from up here. Let's go out to the public. Would anyone like to make a comment on this item? Please come up.
Mayor Duffield, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. If you read the written comments that I submitted to you yesterday, and I don't realistically expect anybody to actually do that, you would know that in our coastal land use plan, the walkway that goes around Balboa Island is called the Bayfront Boardwalk. We have an Oceanfront Boardwalk, and we have a bay. So we have an Oceanfront Boardwalk, and we have a Bayfront Boardwalk. That would be probably a useful terminology to remain consistent with our coastal land use plan. If you read my comments, you would also know that the list of parks that this is referencing in it is a very incomplete and inaccurate list of parks. So if that's going to be the definitive list, it's not very good. You would also know that my big problem with this is, it appears you're going tonight to be adopting this legislation here in Newport Beach, this new ordinance, which was drafted without, drafted by a room of 20 people, but it was not any council people there. It was no public input to that. I would think at the study session here today, you would be being told, because I do not believe there is any urgency about this. I'm not aware that we have a huge problem. I'm not aware that on January 1st, we're going to have, be inundated by street vendors. I would have thought at the study session, you would have been presented with what I would have thought at the study session, you would have been presented with what the problem is, what the city's options are, what US council people want. You would want to solicit input from the public as to what the public wants and what is possible. And tell the staff, the room of 20 people, what you wanted them to come up with, not them telling you what the policy should be. So, I have trouble with that. I have not sure the staff's interpretation of everything is correct. I think it's very debatable what in the legislation a pedestrian pathway means. I'm not sure that it does not include beaches, because certainly pedestrians walk across beaches under our California Constitution. That's your access to the ocean. That is a pedestrian pathway. Also, the regulations have to be objective. I'm not sure I can think of an objective health or safety reason why you could prohibit vending in our city civic center here if other cities are not doing it. What's special about Newport Beach that we would have an objective reason that other cities don't have? I don't see that. As to the dimensions of the carts, I think it's overly restrictive. Some of these have umbrellas and stuff on top of them. We're not allowing that. I don't know that there's an objective reason for not allowing that. And then, I did try to look at the Los Angeles ordinance where this problem arose, and their idea of what the regulations should be are quite different than anything the staff came up with. For instance, around schools, they want to make sure that the vendors are vending healthy food, not junk food and candy all day. Nothing like that in our ordinance, so I don't really think it's been, I understand a lot of effort has been gone into it, but I don't think it's very well done yet. And I don't think it's urgent. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, bring it back.
Just briefly, Mayor-
Sorry, sorry, it wasn't clicking up for me. Thanks.
A little quicker. David Tanner, Newport Beach resident, I'll give you this in just a sec. I might be able to give a little insight to you. If we looked at our sister city, Ensenada, Mexico, you'll find that they have numerous street vendors, primarily in carts or stands. And they're done to make money. These people that operate these, these businesses are there to make money, and so if there's no people there that they can make money from, they aren't there. So, it's the popular places. And in Ensenada, Mexico, there are cruise ships taking Americans and others into the town, into the main area of the town, the commercial, mainly one street of the town. And there are vendors every 10 feet for about 10 blocks. Many of these vendors are the store owners that, basically, you see when you look to one side or the other. They put out another stand, and you're walking between them. It's a trap for, for tourists that are going to a certain location at the end where there are bars, or restaurants, or things like that. But, they have to walk through this. And they're unregulated, from what I can tell. So, they're there because they're going to make money. So, they're not going to be there in a, at least in Mexico, in Ensenada, Mexico, they're not going to be there in a residential neighborhood where there's nobody around. They're going to be where there's a special event, where there's people there. And these people in Mexico, they know the exact time that the boats come in, they're all geared up, they're ready to go, they're staged to set up, and they know when the boats leave. So, they know when the tourists are on the streets, they're there for that event. So, I think that's something we might be able to learn from, in terms of what our fears are, of how the, this new state law and how the ordinance that you're considering might affect us. So, hopefully, this helps. And if any of you wanted to go down and visit our sister city this weekend, it's the Baja 1000. The vendors will be out in full force. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are good comments. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
Thank you for letting me voice my concerns, like all of us have here tonight. I have two businesses down in the Balboa Fun Zone area. We've been there for approximately seven years, which for any of you that know the beach community is like a lifetime. We make most of our money in the summertime, and where the sidewalks and everything are very, very congested. In the wintertime, you can pretty much shoot a cannon down the sidewalk and not hit anybody. Right in front of both of our businesses is the lineup where the Catalina Flyer lines their queue. So, on any given day during the summertime, you could have 500 people that are lined up on the Edgewater area. If you could, I don't know if you can, if you could scroll back to that, where the permits and everything were? Keep going. There we go. So, if I understand correctly, you could put a cart anywhere on the Edgewater area. So, where your cursor is, right about Main Street, if you back up just a little bit, that's where the Catalina Flyer is. So, their line's going to go all the way up Edgewater, and then up to Adams, which I also have another business on. The sidewalks there are approximately about eight to 10 feet on Adams, and Edgewater is anywhere from 10 to probably 20 feet, depending if you move away from the ride area. To have a vendor anywhere in that area would be horrible. One, for traffic, and two, it'd be detrimental to the success of any business that's down there. One of the things that you said earlier was the street vendors were not allowed to have any propane, which limits the cooking ability to just about everybody. But, you guys didn't approach anything about electricity? Can they plug into somebody's building? Can they bring a generator that's under 55, you know, decibels? With a noise ordinance, we said, I believe, 55. I could get an ultra-quiet generator, plop something down on the boardwalk up there of Edgewater, and have a very successful business without paying very little rent at all. Again, making all the money in the summertime, having that extra competition on Edgewater would really dilute the business for all of the businesses down there. And that's just one of many concerns that I have. There's, I think the plan itself is a good plan, but we need to outline a few more areas in that fun zone area, which there's made up mostly of families and children. If we have a 10-foot sidewalk, and you have a four-by-four cart, that doesn't allow very much room for children at play, or so forth and so on, especially when you take in, you know, into consideration the queue for those 500-plus people every single morning. And if you go back to the queue, you could have multiple vendors selling coffee, or hot chocolate, or donuts, that would take up, the queue line takes up about five feet wide, because people spread out, and then the other five feet would, the other four feet is your cart. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any others? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. I don't see anyone.
Just briefly, I wanted to respond to a comment made by Jim Mosher about the civic center. This is a very unique location, primarily because we have the emergency operations center here, we have fire, the fire department's headquarters. There's also a lot of fire equipment staged at various places around City Hall. They park out front, they also store other equipment. So, looking at the civic center, that was one of the reasons why we took a look and said, it's just not really a great place to have these vendors at, primarily because it is a very unique situation, that some other city halls may not, not have the same type of, type of functions. So, I wanted to mention that. And then, we did address the electricity issue. We basically said, everything's got to be on the cart, and they can't plug into anything that's not owned by them, so they can't plug into city outlets or private outlets.
All right, Mr. Avery.
Again, I want to commend staff, and just speaking for myself, it really helps when the framework of something like this is brought to us, we get a chance to comment, staff takes notes. I think it, it works very well. I don't feel like, you know, we're not involved, or we're not setting policy. We certainly have time to review it before the meeting, and the main thing that I think is important to all of us is that we're going to, since we were obligated to do this, that we, all in our districts, listen to our residents and bring that information back to staff and start tailoring this thing. So, on its face, I don't think we're threatened by this. I think it's going to work out just fine. I don't think it's people roaming the streets and all of that. But, I'm sure a lot of residents are concerned, and rightly so, but I think it's going to work out just fine, and we'll get it back and tune it. Thank you.
You, Mr. Heardman.
This last gentleman who spoke about a potential vendor taking business away from established businesses on Edgewater, it seems like I read something about that being prohibited.
So, with the separational and distancing requirements, we do require at least 25 feet from the entrance or exit of a non-residential building.
Established business.
So, that'll pretty much prevent that from happening there.
Mrs. Dixon.
All right, so just to clarify, so that experience that the gentleman described in front of his particular merchants, all the merchants along, where the Catalina Flyer people line up there at the pavilion and all the way down Edgewater, that no carts would be permitted?
I think it might be a good idea to go back and just kind of do a reassessment of that, but I think there are a lot of restrictions in that area, just given how tight it is from being distanced from the openings, as well as, as a lot of the other restrictions. But, I'm not sure if you fully flushed out exactly where they, where they can be or not, but that's something that the staff can definitely take a look at, and if problems arise, then that's something we can bring back as well to the council.
Let me just ask another question, a different topic. So, just to follow along on the sense of urgency that appears to exist, is, I know what this is on the evening agenda, is it absolutely necessary that we pass an ordinance this evening? Could we do it, I don't know, maybe the December, is this, what is this, November 13th? We could do it again on November 27th? Is, what, just to allow more time to ruminate on this, and cogitate, and think, what do we really want? Hear from our business owners and residents as, as we digest this?
Yeah, absolutely. That's not an issue at all. The only issue would be you would have some period of time where there wouldn't be any regulations in place.
Maybe a week or two, I guess, in January, perhaps. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pieter.
Quick question. I presume that the vendors would require, would be required to get a business license as well?
So, the way the state law was set up, it said you could either require a business license, or you could have a permitting program. So, they would not actually have to be required to have a business license, because we went with a more regulatory program and took a look at it that way. A lot of, a lot of cities use business license as a regulatory tool. We do not. We use it primarily as a taxing method. So, here, you had the option of doing one or the other, and so that's why they came up with the program.
So, in effect, the sidewalk vendors will not be paying the business license tax, and the permit fee is based on the actual cost of providing the services. Whereas, the business license tax has got tax revenue associated with it too. So, are you telling me that if we don't, if we go with the permit route, that we can apply these regulations, whereas if we don't have the permit route, we can't?
That's right.
All right, thanks.
All right. Seeing no other speakers up here, I'd like to, this is always confusing to me. So, I think it would be confusing to the public. We're going to vote on this? So, we're not going to vote on it? But, what do we do? Bringing it back, but you've got-
So, you just closed the item now, unless other councilmembers have comments, so we'll come back to you night at the, on the regular meeting agenda.
Great, okay. All right, thank you, staff. Good job. Lot of work. Appreciate it. And I know we'll have more on this subject. So, moving on to the next item, which is the accessory dwelling units.
Mr. Mayor, I could, out of abundance of caution, I would like to recuse myself from this item because of real property interest in which, in the future, may subject, be subject to an application for accessory dwelling unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potem, city council members. This item is our study session. It's kind of an update of our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. You know, we've, we've been in front of the council many times with updating our ordinance, and it's really because the state law keeps changing on us. What we wanted to do is give you just kind of, I think, an update of where we are currently, what the law allows to do. And there's been some discussion with regards, do we want to do more with regards to maybe even restricting ADUs as much as possible? Jaime Murillo is our senior planner. He's been, we always call him our housing czar. He works on our ADU ordinance, and he's going to go through kind of a brief presentation, give you some facts and some numbers to work with, and really what we want from you is, do you want us to do anything more with our ADU ordinance? And that's really what our goal is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Simone. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I think it's important, again, just to rehash what is an ADU. So, in a nutshell, it's an accessory dwelling unit, which is a secondary dwelling unit with independent living facilities. So, it'll have area of, like a bathroom, area for sleeping, and a kitchen. But, as we go through this presentation, and as we talk about state law and our ordinance, it's really important to distinguish between the two types of ADUs. So, with this slide, I just want to highlight, on the right-hand side, you'll see an exhibit which illustrates what we kind of refer to as new construction. Some other jurisdictions refer to them as exterior ADUs, and these are ADUs that are constructed brand-new, resulting in new floor area. So, an example on the top, it can be in addition to an existing single-family home, which is attached to the rear, or it can also be detached as a standalone facility in, for example, the rear yard of a property. It's, what's different about the new construction ADUs, the state law does allow for the city to establish some development standards in regulating those accessory dwelling units. However, as you can see in the example on the left, what we refer to as conversions, these are accessory dwelling units that are created from within the existing space of an existing single-family home. So, as you can see in that exhibit, they're taking the upper level of an existing home and repurposing that as an accessory dwelling unit. And in those circumstances, state law is very restrictive, and does not really allow the city to regulate ADUs. And kind of why we're here is, just really quick, you know, the state has always encouraged the development of accessory dwelling units for several decades. However, most recently, though, the city, in response to the housing shortage, really wanted to reduce the development barriers to the creation of ADUs. And so, in 2016, there was a major amendment to significantly overhaul the law, and what's most significant about that is it prohibited local agencies from prohibiting the development of ADUs. So, that was a major change. So, any existing ordinance that was not compliant with state law, was then deemed null and void. The state also established their own standards for regulating accessory dwelling units, but with the adoption of an ordinance, would allow for agencies to regulate some aspects of accessory dwelling units. And then, most recently, in 2017, state also did a clarifying amendment to state law to essentially expand the areas where ADUs can be converted within an existing single-family home, not only in single-family lots, but also multifamily lots where only a single-family home exists. They also further reduced the parking requirements for accessory dwelling units, and then added the ability for HCD to review and comment on ordinances. But, one of the most common questions we receive is, does the ADU law apply to HOAs? And I've confirmed with HCD staff, the answer is no. The law only applies to local agencies that have standards regulating accessory dwelling units. Existing community covenants, conditions, restrictions will remain in effect, and the law does not preclude HOAs from enforcing or establishing any new regulations pertaining to ADUs. It's important for the city to adopt an ordinance, as I mentioned, because we can regulate certain aspects of ADUs for new construction. So, we can apply development standards related to location, lot size, some aspects of parking, and aesthetics. But, as it relates to ADUs that are converted from within the existing space, I just want to reiterate, state law precludes the city from establishing any further regulations. But, as far as regulations, we do establish for new construction, we just need to be careful that those regulations are not arbitrary, excessive, or burdensome to essentially restrict the creation of ADUs in the city.
Mrs. Dixon.
Yes, just want to clarify. Could you please go back to the preceding slide on the HOA? So, just, I just want to make sure the community understands what this, what you're saying, because we are a city that is heavily, has a heavy concentration of HOAs governed by CCNRs. So, you're saying that in those communities where there is an HOA governed by a CCNR, the ADU state law does not apply?
Correct. Only if there is a, if the HOA has a regulation against prohibiting second units, then that would still remain in effect.
And if an HOA does not have a regulation, but decides on the basis of the- And if an HOA does not have a regulation, but decides on the basis of this new state law and their awareness of it that they want to prohibit, may that happen?
Yes.
So for all intents and purposes, I don't know if you're going to be showing the map of the city later on in your presentation, then I'll bring up this point, but just a heads up, there's only a small portion, which is really the oldest parts of the city, which happens to be my district of Balboa Peninsula, and parts of Newport Heights, as well as parts of Corona del Mar, that are affected by the state law that allows accessory dwelling units, correct?
That's correct. I do have some slides that I think will help make that point.
All right, thank you very much.
So again, I just want to quickly go through, what are the standards that apply to a conversion, or an ADU conversion? And so, state law basically says that within any existing, a single-family dwelling or an accessory structured on an existing single-family property, whether or not it's located in a single-family zone or a multifamily zone, the city has to permit an ADU conversion. There's no restriction on the size of that unit. It can be basically as large as can fit. We cannot require any additional parking for a conversion, and then we can't require any new utility connections or fees. We can require that the unit provides separate access, and we can require that sufficient side and rear setbacks are provided for fire safety, and so we essentially say we need to comply with the building code. We did add some clarification, though. In order to prevent someone from purposely constructing, let's say, like a large room addition, and then later immediately coming back and saying that they want to convert that room addition into an accessory dwelling unit, and thereby getting around their parking requirements and size limitations, we did add clarification to our code, basically saying that in order to be deemed or defined as an existing structure, it has to have been existing and legally permitted for at least three years. And so that was really put in there as a deterrent for someone just trying to get around their code. And we've checked with HCD, and they felt that was appropriate. This is a map overall of the city. As you can see, there's approximately 24,600 lots citywide that would be eligible for a conversion. However, that number is probably very conservative. Some additional factors to consider is whether or not these communities have HOAs. And so this is where the colors kind of help to that point. The yellow are properties that are conventional, single-family zones in the city. The blue is multifamily zones in the city, and then the purple are planned communities. And planned communities are newer communities in the city that most likely consist of HOAs. And so you can see a big part of that map consists of planned communities. Also, with respect to the multifamily properties, an ADU would only be allowed if only a single-family exists on that property. So for the example of a duplex, there's already two units on there, they would not be eligible for an ADU. But in the case of there was only a single-family, they would then be eligible for an ADU. This is a quick comparison of the standards that the city has included in our ordinance, and this is where we do have flexibility with new construction. So with location, we are proposing that the ADUs be allowed within any single-family, where a single-family property is allowed. So that would include single-family zones and multifamily zones, and that's really to maintain consistency with the conversion standards. We did establish a minimum 5,000 square foot minimum lot size, and that has the effect of reducing the eligibility down to approximately 14,000 lots, or only about 56% of the total lots that were eligible for conversion.
If I may, on this slide, this is where if the council would like to make changes, and again, we can only make changes that apply to new construction. So as Jaime has on the screen right now, lot size, the minimum lot size is 5,000 square foot, and it'll be up to the council's discretion if they want to direct staff to look at raising that minimum lot size. Same thing with unit size, you know, is it better to have a cap that is lower as far as maximum unit size? So these are the areas where the city council has some discretion as far as making changes.
Thanks for the clarification. And with regards to unit size, the state standards would allow up to 1,200 square-foot unit. Previous to us adopting the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, we allowed granny units up to 640 square feet, and so we determined that that was large enough for a one-bedroom, and to provide a little bit of flexibility, we established a standard of up to 750 square feet. With regards to aesthetics, there's no standard under state law. However, in order to maintain the character of a lot of the single-family neighborhoods, we established a height limit for detached units to one-story and 14 feet in height. We also established some basic design standards that require the architectural style, roof, color, and materials to match the principal unit. And so that's so that the accessory dwelling unit doesn't stand out. We don't have a, like a historic-looking home in the front, and then a modern ADU in the back. With regards to parking, state law does allow for some application of standards, but they have some very specific standards that we have to implement. And so for new ADUs, we can require a maximum of one parking space. However, that space can be in any configuration, either covered, uncovered, it can be in tandem on a driveway, or it even states it can be provided through the use of mechanical lifts. However, if the property is located within half a mile of public transit, one block of a car share program, within a historic district, or an area of the city that has on-street parking permits, but where the city does not offer them to ADU occupants, then the requirement for one parking space is then waived. And so our ordinance includes those standards, and we also clarified that parking in the alley setbacks due to fire and life safety issues is prohibited, as it is with any new development in the city. We also went further to define what public transit stop means in a car share.
Excuse me, Mrs. Dixon.
Jaime, may I, thank you, Mayor. If you would, please go back to those parking comments. Again, for all intents and purposes, I'm speaking of Balboa Peninsula, and maybe this applies to Balboa Island or Corona del Mar, where you have high density, and parking shortages. So what you've just said, just to be clear so everyone understands, is that there is no parking requirement. If you're within a half a mile of a public transit, and for all intents and purposes, at least I could speak about Balboa Island, most all the streets are within a half a mile of a bus stop, correct? So that would mean no parking requirement on these interior streets of Balboa Peninsula.
Correct, on the peninsula. And this slide here shows the two bus routes we have in the city that meets that definition, and so that red dashed path is that bus line you're referring to.
So just to be clear, that means that anyone who builds, constructs, an accessory dwelling unit does not have to provide parking?
Along, within a half mile of that.
And that...
Correct. And I'll show you a blow-up of this.
Okay.
It'll stand out a little better.
All right. But I'm concerned about that. We have a shortage of parking now, as it is. We all know that. And now we're allowing new construction without requiring a parking requirement, because that is what the state is requiring. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so on this slide, you'll see the total number of properties that are eligible using the 5,000 square foot minimum lot area, and as I mentioned before, it goes down about 56% of the lots that were previously allowed through a conversion. And again, there's still a lot of factors, you know, you have a lot of communities that have an HOA that might further preclude them, or the incidence of some of these properties are zoned R2 and have a duplex, and therefore they're not also allowed.
Excuse me, we have a question for Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, Councilwoman Dixon, did you refer to, did I hear you say bus stops on Balboa Island?
No, I misspoke.
Okay, all right, because there isn't any.
No, I meant, I was, I missed.
That's all right, thank you.
So this, and I know the area of greatest concern for the council, and even for us as staff for the city, is the impact of ADUs on the older parts of town, where the lots are substandard, there's a lot less privacy between property owners, and the demand for on-street parking is at its highest. So again, this shows all the properties that would be eligible through conversion, and once we apply the minimum 5,000 square foot lot area requirement for new construction, you can see a lot of that development potential goes away on the peninsula, as well as Balboa Island, on Lido, and West Newport. There is some scattered properties, a lot of them are 2s, that most likely are already developed with more than a 2 or more units. And so there's really not too much opportunity that remains along that bus line on the peninsula. Correct. And even some of those yellow areas, like on Peninsula Point, some of those lots legally kind of go into the water, but the way we've defined the minimum lot size, you can't include any submerged lands. So even some of those properties might drop off as we look into them a little further. We thought this exhibit actually would be helpful, and so, Councilmember Dixon, as you mentioned, in your district, there is not a lot of HOAs. The lots eligible for conversion, there's about 4,600 lots, but once we apply that 5,000 minimum lot size standard for new construction, the number of eligible lots drops significantly to about 372, so it's only about 8% of those lots that would normally be eligible for conversion. So the new construction potential in that district has been significantly reduced. As staff, we believe the areas where we're going to see the greater number of ADUs proposed, and kind of what we're seeing today, is in areas 2 and 3, where there is larger lots, and still not a lot of HOAs. And then obviously, like areas 7, it's all a lot of newer communities that do have HOAs, so we don't anticipate too many ADUs within those areas. This slide just shows what would happen to the development potential if we did increase the lot size. Obviously, as the minimum lot size increases, the development potential significantly decreases. However, the reason staff chose 5,000 square feet, and this was kind of worked through with the planning commission with the adoption of the initial ordinance, was that 5,000 square feet is the minimum lot size for new lots in the city today. And so it's not an arbitrary standard. That's a reasonable standard that we can point to, and that makes sense, but still provides some development opportunity. But as I previously showed, would preclude development in those older parts of the city where we have a lot of concerns about privacy and on-street parking. This just shows what has been the effect on the city so far. You know, staff, when we first heard of this new state law, you know, we thought the floodgates would open and all kinds of applications would come in. However, it really hasn't been the case so far. We've received a total of nine applications. We have issued six permits. Of those applications, four have been for new construction, and five have been conversions, and there really haven't been any on the peninsula. I did want to take this opportunity to kind of go over what other cities are doing, and it varies widely. There are some cities that are fully supportive of accessory dwelling units, it's part of their affordable housing strategy. And for example, Santa Cruz and San Mateo, they're the two main cities that have actually created design manuals and prototypes for property owners to use. Some cities have adopted their own standards, similar Newport Beach, but it's approximately about 1/3 of the cities so far in the state. Most of the cities are, currently do rely on the state standards, including a lot of the coastal cities that we were looking to, for an example. Specifically, we did a more detailed survey of 23 jurisdictions, trying to find similar coastal cities such as us. So those are listed on the slide. We also looked at some other cities in Orange County, including Orange, Costa Mesa, Fountain Valley, Irvine, Garena Grove, and Aliso Viejo. But overall, the standards are very similar. Where they vary the most is with regards to lot size and unit size, and also some of the aesthetic standards. With location, some cities only allow them for new construction. Again, I just want to reiterate, this is where cities have the ability to regulate from new construction. And so some cities only allow them in single-family zones, and a lot of cities do allow them in single-family or multifamily zones, where they have, like, lots that allow for like duplexes such as Newport Beach. But lot size is where it varies the most, and some cities didn't have any minimum lot size, and some were as high as one acre. But you got to remember, a lot of inland cities, their typical lot sizes are a lot larger than what we have here in Newport Beach. So I'm looking at coastal cities, their minimum lot size, they vary from no minimum lot size to 6,000. And so I think our 5,000 is in line with what other cities are doing. Terms of unit size, again, a lot of cities vary. What we found is they allowed up to 500 square feet, or to 1,200, consistent with state standards. A lot of them had varying limits on unit size, depending on their lot size, depending on bedroom count, or whether or not they were detached or attached units. But I think something to point out is, the smaller the unit, most likely, they're going to be more affordable, which is kind of what we believe is the intent of state law. Also, a lot of cities do limit the height of detached accessory dwelling units to one story, similar to what we have in our ordinance. Some unique standards that we saw was related to fire protection. Again, state law states that the city can't require fire sprinklers for the accessory dwelling unit if they weren't required for the principal dwelling unit. So like Carlsbad, what they've included was that the ADU has to be within 500 feet of a fire hydrant. If not, then the chief, the fire chief would have to approve the ADU and could apply some additional fire suppression methods, different from fire sprinklers. Laguna Beach has some areas of the city that are identified as high-fire hazard areas in their general plan, and so they are requiring parking for new construction, despite the exceptions that state law provides. We don't know exactly how that would hold up if they got challenged, but it is something they are implementing. Some cities provide more flexible standards if the units are made available as permanent affordable housing, so there's an opportunity to provide some incentives there. Some cities require some minimum open space requirements in the yards, or apply privacy standards to the design, such that, to minimize the impacts on neighboring properties. And so with that, I just want to kind of reiterate where we're currently at with our ordinance. So we have two codes we have to implement. We have our zoning code, which applies to lots citywide, and then we have our local coastal program, which applies to only lots in the coastal zone. And the local coastal program requires coastal commission approval. So with the zoning code, we implemented an ordinance which is compliant with the first 2016 state law change, and we're currently proposing changes to make it consistent with the more recent 2017 state law change. And since we had our first reading in September, the coastal commission just finished reviewing our changes to the local coastal program to implement the 2016 changes. They approved that on October 12th, and with that, they suggested, they included suggested modifications to incorporate the more recent 2017 state law revisions. And so with that, staff is recommending that we move forward and introduce an updated ordinance for adoption in January of 2019, to incorporate the coastal commission modifications for city council and review. We believe it is a priority to bring our ordinance in compliance with state law. And then, should the city council desire, we could return back to the city council and the coastal commission with further revisions to any of those standards, such as lot size, unit size, or aesthetics, if there's a desire to do so. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. That's quite extensive, a lot of work. All right, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Jaime. I would like to see this come back to make sure that we're code compliant.
Anyone else? None? Like to, anyone out in the public would like to make a comment on this item? Please come up.
Mayor De Field, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher, and first comment I wanted to make in the early part of the presentation, the staff was referring to CCNRs, conditions, covenants, and restrictions that are kind of a deed restriction, and it was referring to HOAs as if the two things were synonymous. And I don't think they're exactly the same. But the lot that I own has CCNRs that were imposed on the deed to... But the lot that I own has CCNRs that were imposed on the deed to the lot when the lot was subdivided, which restrict the occupancy to or use of the lot to one single-family home. I think it would be helpful for the public to know if a restriction like that is sufficient or needs to be modified. And then second, to clarify that the city and the city staff doesn't actually enforce the CCNR, so they may prohibit these. On the street where I live, there is one granny flat that probably is in violation of the CCNRs, but the city would not get involved in that. That's a private dispute between homeowners. I think that would be helpful to clarify. And then as to the status of the thing, the very last slides, those were the ones that confused me the most. Last month, you had a first reading of an ordinance that was poised to the second reading. What the coastal commission with their modifications approved last month was what you introduced at the first reading. Is that, is the, I'm kind of lost with the track of that. Is, we heard now we have to go back in January and reintroduce the ordinance that you already had the first reading of? Or are you asking for the council here to provide further input so that what you introduced in January will be different? Why are we not just proceeding to the second reading to match what the coastal commission adopted last month? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
David Tanner, Newport Beach resident. I addressed this council back when AB or Senate Bill 2299 and AB 494 were first adopted. I applauded the council on the action they took with your ordinance 1711, I believe it was, and I support the intent of this ordinance today. I can tell you, I've done a lot of research on these bills and other legislation that the state passed in 2017. My last check with HUD on their website, there were approximately 150 cities and counties that adopted ordinances. The lot size ranged from a low of 5,000 square feet up to the maximum I can recall, the last time I looked, was something like 12,000 square feet. I thought that the city of Long Beach, which wasn't on the list, was a very good ordinance that you might look at, but I don't support AB 2299 or, I'm sorry, SB 2299 or Assembly Bill 494. I don't, I just don't support them. So anyway, in looking at your ordinance, on the first page of the ordinance, there's a couple of statements that I want to bring up that I think are troubling. They're the whereas's and they're the sixth and seventh whereas. And basically, what they're saying is adopting the ordinance consistent with the government code, ensuring the character of the city of Newport Beach is preserved to the maximum extent possible, and the city's regulation regarding accessory dwelling units continues to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And I'm wondering how you're going to make that finding, given the state of emergencies that currently exist due to fires within this state? How is adding, and I don't know what the number is because the number seems confusing to me, whether it's 20,000 additional, the potential for 20,000 additional units or 10,000 additional units? How you can make this statement that's saying that passing this ordinance is going to increase the health and safety of the residents of Newport Beach? And similar concern with the next whereas where it ends with the word "public safety." So I have that concern and I'd like to share with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I'd like to bring it, Mr. Harp, would you have any input for us on Mr. Mosher's comments?
I'll go ahead and defer to Jaime or Simone.
So I think that, you mind, to clarify the mayor's point, the question that Jim was asking was, how are we bringing it back? So are we bringing it back on a second reading? Are we introducing it as a first reading on the ordinance now? What's, when we bring this back to get code compliant, do we know what the process is going to be?
Right, so there's going to be two ordinances. The first is related to the zoning code and so the city council already held the first reading in September of 2018, so we just need to bring that one back for second reading. However, the ordinance related to the local coastal program, the city council reviewed that initially and approved the resolution to authorize staff to submit those changes to the coastal commission. Now that they've reviewed it and provided suggested modifications, we are going to bring an ordinance related to the local coastal program for introduction and then again, bring it back for second reading. So there's two separate ordinances.
All right, thank you. So does that, I don't see any other comments up here, or does that conclude your?
It's great.
Presentation? Thank you. All right, that's a lot of work. Thank you very much. I'm sure there'll be more ahead of us on that one. All right, now we'll move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Please come forward.
Mayor Duffield, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher and on your closed session agenda, item 4B is a discussion of anticipated litigation. The agenda was amended to explain what the anticipated litigation is about. I'm very grateful for the staff for doing that, but I am told you're going to be reviewing a letter that was received way back in January of this year from an organization called California River Watch, and it says it's available at the city clerk's office. I did go and read the letter. It's a very interesting letter and I don't know if you have discussed this before in closed session or not, but the substance of the water is that this organization, which is concerned about water quality, is concerned that the city of Newport Beach, according to the reports that it has made, has had 25 sewer system overflows in the last five years, which is a very high number. They're concerned that the city has been systematically underreporting the amount of sewage that flowed out during those overflow events and the possibility that due to our very old infrastructure that we have, that some of our pipes might be leaking. This is on the agenda as if it's a notice of intent to file suit, and although as I understood from the letter, under the Clean Water Act, this gave the organization standing or the right to eventually sue the city if they wanted to, but it wasn't really a threatening letter. The letter was inviting the city to work with them to try to solve this problem. Why do we have so many sewage overflows and what can we do about our aging infrastructure? I thought it was a very inviting, not a threatening, letter and I am wondering why you would be not speaking about this in open session? I'm wondering why this matter was not referred to our Coastal Tidestands Water Quality Committee for public discussion of, is, do they have a valid point here? And, you know, I am baffled by why we're treating this as a threat of a lawsuit rather than invitation to improve health and welfare of our citizens. And then the second thing I wanted to comment on is tonight on your agenda, item Roman numeral 19, you have an opportunity to reconsider votes that you took at your last meeting. I'll probably mention this again tonight. I strongly urge you to reconsider the vote you took at your last meeting on item four, which was the harbor speed limit. You inadvertently adopted an ordinance that revoked or repealed, omitted an important passage in our harbor code that allowed harbor commission decisions to be appealed to the city council. The city staff kind of surreptitiously replaced that with the corrected ordinance, but the public record shows that's not what you adopted and doing a thing like that undermines the entire integrity of what you do and I think would be much better to go back and ask staff to reintroduce a proper ordinance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none? Now go to closed session, Mr. Harp.
Thank you very much. The city council adjourned a closed session to discuss items 4A and B, including meeting with labor negotiators, the city manager, Grace Leong, assistant city manager, Carol Jacobs, human resources director, Barbara Salvini, and Peter Brown, to discuss labor negotiations with those unions listed under agenda item number 4A. The city council will also meet with legal counsel to discuss the January 22nd, 2018 notice of intent to file lawsuit under the Federal Water Pollution Clean Control Act, which is also known as the Clean Water Act, that was sent to the city by River Watch. A copy of the notice is available for public inspection at the city clerk's office here at City Hall, 100 Civic Center Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are recessed until the seven o'clock regular meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the November 11th regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Yes, there's a brief closed session report this evening. In regards to agenda item 4B, the item involving River Watch, the city council has authorized the city manager to execute a settlement agreement with California River Watch, which provides for the replacement of all sewer lines within 200 feet of surface water areas that have significant defects, updated reporting requirements and water sampling, additional public notice related to sewage spills, and the payment of $50,000 in attorney's fees. A copy of the settlement agreement will be available to the public once it's fully executed. The motion to approve the settlement agreement was made by Mayor Potem O'Neill and seconded by councilmember Avery. All councilmembers present voted in favor of the motion. Councilmember Mill Doone was absent however for that vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will now have our invocation tonight by Reverend Joy Price from the Christ Church by the Sea and I pledge allegiance to councilmember Dixon.
Let us pray. Oh holy one, as we approach the season of Thanksgiving, we lift up our hearts in gratitude for all that you provide, for the ocean, beaches, and hills that we call home, for the wildlife that share this place with us, for the friends, neighbors, and family that fill our lives. We thank you. For the bounty that supplies our every need and the homes that protect us, we thank you. For the leaders that have given their hearts and souls to our community, we thank you. For new leaders that have come forward to serve us, we thank you. For a nation that practices democracy and allows us to share our thoughts and opinions through the right to vote, we thank you. Oh holy one, we bow before you this evening with heavy hearts. There has been so much destruction in our beautiful state that we weep. We weep for lives lost to those with evil intent. We weep for those lives lost to wildfires. And we weep for all those who have lost their homes and livelihoods. Please God, let them know your peace. We pray that you would make us better stewards of all the gifts you have given us, that we might better protect that which you entrust to our care. And we pray that you will continue to protect and support all of the first responders who have placed their lives on the line to stop the violence that is both of human origin and of nature's will. Tonight, we ask that you provide these leaders and participants with your wisdom and guidance. Let them make just and caring decisions. Let them listen deeply to those who are present and let them know your goodness and love that they may serve this great community with their whole hearts. Holy one, we thank you for your love, for all of your creation, and offer ourselves in service to others. We pray these things in your most holy name. Amen.
Place your hand over your heart. Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people for which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you. We'll now have the city council announcements and new items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas, and I'm going to merge it with oral reports from city council on committee activities. So, Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A week or so ago, I attended, well, I'm a mentor of the New Barnham High School in the mentor program along with Councilman O'Neill, and we've talked before about what a great program that is. It's part of the fabric of the community now. But my mentee, Landon Cersei, he invited me to his Eagle Scout ceremony, which reminded me again just what a great organization scouting is and how important it still is. It's gone through, as we all know, a pretty significant soul-searching time over the years, but it's fabulous. And these young men were just so impressive getting up there and speaking and talking of what's valued to them about character and about leadership, and that's just stuff we need today more than ever for, for young people, both boys and girls, of course. So just wanted to say that's happening all the time out there and we should, we should do what we can to value it. And sort of on the flip side of that, I attended over in Councilman Hurdman's district. His lovely wife was there and it was a very nice time with Veterans Day barbecue, which is a recent tradition. I'm sure Councilman Hurdman will talk about it, but Julie and I had a nice lunch with Jeff and Sally. And this was started a few years ago by a Babo Island resident, Bill Stewart, and it was a really nice homespun community event, the kind of things they throw all the time on Babo Island. I'm always envious of Jeff's district for that. It's just, you know, it's kind of the bubble of Babo Island and it's a special place. So that was great. And then finally, I just wanted to point out a small victory of the West Coast Highway landscaping improvements that has been a long, long time coming in my district. And there, so the meeting there, it's maybe not impressive to many, but to me, it's really significant and I know it's significant to all the residents in West Newport, both sides of the highway. And we've got three more iterations to come over the next couple of years. Public Works has been great putting this in and working with residents and I urge residents to keep pushing and I'll keep pushing because this is one of the gateways into Newport and it's not just those residents that benefit, but just the whole city benefits, I think, when we make a decision to make these improvements and of course, keeping the budget in mind and taking it in steps is a good thing. So I'm just really happy about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Potter, Piotr, sorry. Mrs. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a few announcements. This week, many of you may be seeing in the social and public media, United Way of Orange County is launching with its partners all over Orange County, United to End Homelessness, and it's a major outreach of information sharing to the community to update the community of what is going on with homelessness. And this last weekend, the Register had a front page above the fold story about pushing hard to change public perception. So this is an awareness effort extensively to inform the community because all cities in our 34-city county are touched by homelessness and our own city as well. And so partially in answer, response to our own residents who are wondering what is happening with homelessness, I'm very pleased to say that are wondering what is happening with homelessness, I'm very pleased to say that Newport Beach is partnering with the county and with ACCOC, the Associated Cities of Orange County, and the 34 cities, that are all working together in various aspects of working to end homelessness. But specifically, United Way is leading the charge as the convener of convening the organizations, the faith-based organizations, the nonprofit organizations, as well as public agencies to pool their resources and their time, talent, and treasure, to a certain extent, to provide the first priority is support of housing units. And in our own community, we have a resident, Mr. Ernie Schroeder, who is an owner of Apartment Schroeder Properties, one of the large multi-unit property owners, apartment owner companies in the county, is really leading the example by providing homeless apartments for homeless. This is not in Newport Beach necessarily, it's all over the county. So, people are stepping up, businesses are stepping up, entities or nonprofit entities are starting to really come together because they know that there is a convener. The county is now focused on this. United Way, the faith-based organizations are all marching forward to work together to solve homelessness. And this is a really important messaging and awareness to the community that there is significant efforts, humane-driven efforts, to help our homeless find housing and work with them. Some of the stories I've already heard are really heartwarming, that people have been searching for an apartment for two years. They even have a voucher from the state or federal government, and now they can use this voucher. And there have been identified apartments in other cities of Orange County. But the important thing is to note to the communities that this problem is, people are working really hard to address this issue. And I'm very proud of United Way. Number two, I think somebody else may comment on this, but I just want to give kudos to the Newport Beach Foundation that has been reconstructed and reticence, if you will, that they had a wonderfully successful event at the Newport Harbor Yacht Club on October 24th. And all members, key members of our city staff were there to talk about what their functions do. And this is the Newport Beach Foundation, a leadership excellence program is to encourage participants to participate in the leadership program, to learn more about our city, and the hope being that someday they may want, they truly may want to run for office and serve the city in different ways. That would be wonderful. And kudos to the President Joe Stapleton, who's just done an amazing job to revitalize the foundation. And last Friday, I think it was, I went to the really wonderful program, the Newport Beach Historical Society, had a history of the boat parade. And Bernie Salvstad and Seymour Beek and David Beek and a lot of the people have been, their families have been involved in the Christmas Boat Parade for over 100 years. So, it was really a wonderful event, and I was happy to be there. And tomorrow, just FYI, that our own city manager, Grace Leong, will be speaking to Speak Up Newport across the way in the community room at 5:15 to 6:00 as a reception, and then the program begins from 6:00 to 7:00. So, come listen to our city manager. And one other item, staff has asked me to announce that, the staff is very sorry that some residents were not able to have their documents shredded at the recent document shredding event that the city co-hosted with CRNR last weekend. Both trucks were filled to capacity by mid-morning, and unfortunately, the event had to end early because there were no more trucks. So, we do apologize for that inconvenience. The city is working with adding another document, adding on an additional document shredding event in December or early January. As soon as we can get more trucks reserved, and we will announce that date. So, those of you who are sitting with all your documents ready to be shredded, we will address this before the end of the year, hopefully, or early January. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Herdman.
Yes, a few things to announce. A couple of them have already been covered, so I won't repeat them. Give you an aviation update. We did have an aviation committee meeting last week. We covered the JWADEIR proposal for general aviation. We gave those in attendance an update on city efforts, current city efforts in terms of what's taking place with John Wayne Airport and the major air carriers that utilize the airport in terms of takeoff procedures. That's what we're working with them on. We also have an airport, we have a group of people and staff within the city that are meeting on a weekly basis regarding the airport. We call it the messaging committee. And I just want you to know that we're hard at work. You may not be hearing a whole lot about the airport issue right now, but please know that city staff and city volunteers continue to work very hard on this issue. Councilman Avery continues to do an outstanding job of chairing our Water and Tidelands Committee meeting. We held a meeting this month, and he's just doing a real good job of keeping us, our attention on our goals and objectives for this year. Me personally, my wife and I attended the Newport Harbor High School Grandparent Day. We get to do that because we're grandparents, and we've got four kids at that school. I, last Sunday, addressed Irvine Terrace Homeowners Association at their annual meeting. And as a result of the seawall extension on Babo Island, some older people and people with disabilities are expressing concern about not being able to get up to the public piers. So, our Public Works Department, Maintenance and Operations Department, is working on the installation of grab bars on the public piers. So, hopefully, everybody will be able to get up, get on, and use the public piers. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no announcements, but I do have a little bit of an update. We're all being, we're all glued to the television right now, watching this awful fire happen up and down the state. A little bit of our department, our department, our firefighters are in the center of it. This is from Chief Duncan. E-66, the Mariners Division, is assigned to the Woolsey Fire. They've been assigned to the fire since Thursday and worked 72 hours straight defending structures in West Lake and Agora Hills. They completed a 24-hour shift yesterday and should be coming off the line today for rest. Rest periods are weather-dependent, and if the weather gets bad, they will go back out. E-65, it's Colonel Del Mar, has been assigned to the Woolsey Fire since Friday. They have been working in the Point, Doom, and Malibu area, performing structure defense and mop-up. They went in for a rest period yesterday but are back out today for 24-hour line assignments. All Newport Beach fire stations are fully staffed. We add additional firefighters to E-69, that's Newport Coast, to upgrade the crew to four firefighters on that engine. E-68, excuse me, has the largest area of wildland urban interface, and additional firefighter increases the unit's ability to knock down a small vegetation fire quickly. The staff will continue until the San Ana wind eventually has diminished. The Orange County Fire Chiefs agreed that no more fire resources are available for out-of-county assignments. We have two brush engine strike teams, five engines each, stage for in-county responses, and one structural engine strike five, five engines staged, stationed county. We also have four firefighting helicopter stationed county. These units are in addition to our normal daily staffing throughout the county. Red flag conditions are predicted until Wednesday, but winds appear to be lessening. Relative humidity remains in the teens or single digits until the weekend. We will continue to monitor the weather conditions, and we'll take appropriate action to prepare for assignment for significant wildland events. So, I'd like to take the opportunity to say that we're praying for our firefighters, and thank you, Chief, for your leadership, and thank you for the brave men and women in our department who are doing what they can to protect the state.
Great. Thank you for bringing that up. Mayor Protim O'Neil.
Sure, a few things. So, a few weeks ago, I was invited back to the White House for the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs Conference, bringing back elected officials from California, Alaska, and Hawaii. We were actually the only groups of states to actually hear from the president himself. There were about 120 of us. But we were there mostly to learn about the functions of the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, and I was able to bring back one of the best contact sheets in all of government, which is I contacted every federal agency that I provided to our city staff to, whose entire job, each person on that list, is to respond and let us know who to talk to within an agency on any question we've got. So, that'll be fantastic. I wanted to say a quick, happy 73rd wedding anniversary to Tom and Jean Naughton, Newport Beach, longtime Newport Beach residents. I was able to speak at the Citizen of the Year event a couple of weeks ago. Debbie Snavely, our Newport Beach and Company Chairwoman for the Board of Directors, received it. Just a great night. It was a lot of fun. The, we also had the birthday of, he likes to call himself the mayor of Babo Island, Jack Allahan. So, happy birthday to Jack. And then this morning, Councilmember Herdman and I attended the Boys and Girls Club announcement that they are going to be renovating their facilities, including the one in Newport Beach, which many kids have gone to, especially after school programs. They have already raised $5 million to renovate their facilities, and their goal is $6 million. So, it was fantastic. I congratulate Robert Santana and his whole staff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I have an exciting announcement that we've been working on for about three years. I went up to Santa Cruz to the Ocean Protection Committee meeting, where they dole out monies to protect and promote and encourage and support projects around, on the ocean, including wildlife and all of that. So, in our case, we had a machine that we want to install at the San Diego Creek, where it enters into our bay, to gather all the trash into a trash bin, where we can take it out and empty it before, before it gets to the bay. Once it gets to the upper bay, a styrofoam cup on reed grass will stay there forever. And finally, we are going to have a method of stopping the trash before it gets. And that was a $1.68 million grant that was given to us. And I want to thank John Kapler of our city staff, who is our grant writing expert, as well as all the staff, of course. But, and another big driver of this machine gathering all this is a volunteer private citizen, Billy Dutton. He doesn't want any credit at all, but Billy just is an amazing energizer bunny when it comes to things like this. And without his dedication and perseverance, we would never have it at this point. So, this is still a ways off. It's going to take a year to build it, and probably another six months or so to install it. And then, of course, Coastal Commission has to chime in. So, it's a slow, long battle to get something you would think is so simple and so necessary, because every day we don't have it, tons and tons of trash just keep emptying into our upper bay and making its way down to our lower bay. I will say that the other creek that empties into there, up there, it has a six or seven million dollar trash machine, device that was just installed and is operational, right, at this point? So, that is a huge improvement to the water quality of our harbor. And I'm very excited to be a part of it and working on solutions. Okay, so enough of that. Thank you. And we will now have public comments, I think.
Public comments on the council announcements that were just done?
Yes. Public, anyone like to come up and talk about anything of what was just said? All right? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Public comments on consent calendar. This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 12. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any items to pull from the consent calendars? Start with Mr. Avery.
None.
Mr. Pieter.
Item number nine, please.
Mrs. Dixon.
None.
Mr. Herdman.
None.
Mr. Muldoon. Mayor Protim O'Neil.
None, but I'll note an abstention on item one.
Okay. And I have none?
All right. I move the consent calendar be approved with an abstention showing from me, and an item number nine being pulled by Councilmember Pieter.
I'll second the motion.
All right. We'll now go out to public comments on the consent calendar. Anyone wishing to speak on the consent calendar, please come up. Jim, are you awake? Okay. All right. So, Mr. Pieter wanted to pull number nine? Oh, sorry. Sorry, I always do that wrong. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance number 2018-16, and ordinance of the City Council of Newport Beach, amending Title 21 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to Approve Local Coastal Program Amendment Number LC 2017-002, as modified by the California Coastal Commission. Mayor, if you can vote, please.
Oh, sorry. Gosh, I'm losing it.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay. Now, we're going to, Mr. Pieter has pulled item nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a budget item that I frankly was against a year and a half ago, and I would like a brief staff report, if we could do that.
Yes, Councilman Pieter, Mr. Mayor, council members. This project tonight has to do with some street furnishing, replacement enhancement, and also some concrete enhancement. I'm going to turn it over to Acting City Engineer Mike Sinaccord to give you a brief report.
Good evening, mayors, city council members. We have a PowerPoint here. We could go through a couple of slides. We have more slides if these first couple of slides don't answer some questions. This project's been in the making for about a year and a half. It was first... This project was actually started back in the '16-'17 budget, but the council appropriated $355,000 in last year's budget. And we've been working on design with the BIVAC, the Babo Village Advisory Committee, through last year. And with the summer season, we postponed this project until this fiscal year. However, we actually have accomplished some things pre-summer, spruced up some things that the BIVAC folks wanted us to see, trash receptacles. Again, hats off to our mods department. We've ordered, I can't remember the exact number, 50 comes to mind, trash cans. The mod staff actually installed the bike racks that the BIVAC committee wanted us to put out there, and they were heavily used this summer. And then the rest of this project is within this package. We had landscape restoration on Babo Boulevard and Main Street as the main streetscape project that was identified in the master plan back a few years ago, replacing planters, hanging baskets. We also, as we went through the BIVAC, you know, design review, did several walks out there with the committee. We identified things that just made sense to do if we're out there, such as adding some landscape restoration on the Palm Street parking lot. We saw some uplifting on some concrete on Washington Street itself, and some recommendations to add some landscaping there, add a little bit of a spruce up at the pier restroom. The landscaping there was looking a little tired. And then we also had some tripping hazards with the tree wells in and around the village. So, this contract includes, again, landscaping. This was streetscape, master-planned, identified restoration on Babo Boulevard and Main Streets, basically the landscaping and the pots and decorative items on those two streets. Again, we added some landscaping at those locations. The big ticket that we also identified when we were out there is about a quarter million dollars' worth of lithocrete repairs that just had to be taking place, taken care of now as part of this project. Without those repairs, we couldn't proceed... Without those repairs, we couldn't proceed with some of the things that were recommended in the streetscape plan. Those, I'm gonna go on here. The total project cost here tonight, $707,000. Of that, $477,000 is coming from the BVAC funding, which is, again, going back to the original... Back, Dave? I'm gonna stop here. I've got a lot more slides and I could continue on. I don't know if there's specific questions Councilmember Piattar has or...
I think that's enough. Thanks, Mike. Part of what we're doing tonight is we're approving the project plans and specifications, which weren't part of our draw, our staff report. Mike was kind enough to walk me through those this afternoon. You know, we've got basically a very, very expensive upgraded landscape hardscape down here on, on a very heavy trafficked area of our community with visitors. And it's a very expensive process to maintain it. We've got a bunch of raised pots and planters that cost, you know, $1,100 apiece, and we're replacing a lot of those because they're cracked or faded. You know, I, I just want to bring this to the council's attention. I know I've been working with the CDM bid and they're trying to get some, you know, street furniture that they bought, refinished. And it's been a very expensive process that they've had to do on their own. And here, what we're at, being asked to do tonight is to approve not only the original budget, but add another $160,000 to the budget to, to do a lot of upkeep and maintenance on an area that we've spent a lot of money on already. I know nothing's gonna happen of it. I, you know, we, we installed it. It, it was expensive. We need to maintain it. So, I understand the need to do this, but I just want to point out that this area is, is sucking up a lot of money of, of the, of the cities to maintain. And I'm not sure that we're, certainly, we were, if we were to be in 2004, again, deciding again whether we want to put lithocrete in, there are other less expensive, easier to maintain items that are still considered upgrades. You know, but this kind of goes with the arch. You'll know that you're there because the landscaping, hardscaping looks better there than anywhere else in the city. So, I, I'm done with this and I'll not move recommendation. I'll be voting against the project and the budget amendment.
All right. I'm seeing no comments from up here. Are there any public comments on this? Seeing none. We have a motion?
I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Later. We're not at that point.
I'll make a motion to support item number nine for the Babo Village Street improvements.
I'll second the motion.
All right, let's vote.
With Councilmember Piattar voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
Check, check. Thank you, honorable council members. My name is Ryan Reza Farsai. My lifelong address is 2714 Portland Street, Los Angeles, California. This morning, I was at the city council meeting, and I didn't get a chance to talk on some of the items because they said the public has been satisfied on these items. But the fact is, the city of Los Angeles has a $9.9 billion a year budget, much superior to you guys. And they spend a lot of money. That's $27.5 million a day, ladies and gentlemen. And this morning, they got two bonds. I was actually there to talk about it because we're making these containers for the homeless people. And they got two bonds issued, up to 23 and another, another tot, total of 43, 23 and 20, $20 million. Two separate items. It's separate from the budget, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here also to address Belcourt Park, Belcourt Master Powerstone, and Progressive Property Management in Belcourt, the state of Israel, my neighborhood. One of my properties, I have a home, or actually, it's a condominium at 52 Belcourt. It's a condominium, meaning we don't own our driveways, we don't own our roof, we just own everything inside our gates. And I wanted to let them know that fraud and theft is going on with them, and they need to step down before Christmas or else have a chance of going to jail. That's what happens to white collar criminals. The same with the city of Mission Viejo staff. Certain past and present city council members have aided and abetted Dr. Curly, their attorney, the city attorney, to, again, come and, come on my property and do, do dumb things. They erected a LCD sign over there in Mission Viejo. Now, I'm gonna tell you the story about Veterans Day. What is Veterans Day? It was really called Armist Day on the day that the Germans receded. So, a year after the Germans receded, they came up with Armist Day. They call it Remembrance Day in, in Great Britain. Why is that? Because of Otto Hyder. I'm living in Otto Hyder's place right now in Oregon. The address is 1330 West Main Street. Otto Hyder was a Russian, a German, an American, and an Israeli. He basically is the reason that there's attorneys, judges, and courtrooms, and lawmaking, law enforcement, sheriffs, CHP Witness Protection Program, all this stuff. He played us. He killed millions of people. This is my opinion. You see that fire you're seeing over there in the San Fernando Valley? That's happening because of the flow of water. Dear veterans and Americans, I'm here to tell you you have been played by the kings of Europe. They have banks collecting on the flow of water and the flow of your blood. That's what happens when our firemen die to save the fire. They're collecting. The state of Israel is their prisoner to the kings of Europe. They're collecting all the money. They gotta put it in the banks as long, every flow of water is being collected by someone, ladies and gentlemen. All those fires that are be, the waters that's falling on those fires, someone's making money on those. They're my Israeli brothers and sisters. I'm here to confess their sins, Your Honor. This is an open, public setting. Thank you for my consideration, for letting me talk. You have a wonderful evening. Veterans, I love you. God bless you all. I'm here to save you, veterans. I'm not a killer like our government.
Thank, thank you. Please come up.
David Tanner, longtime Newport Beach resident. Thank you for this opportunity.
David, yeah?
Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. Given the recent natural disasters, including the horrific California fires, I'd like to express my concerns over the state of the city's emergency preparedness and recovery plans. As a member of the city council, you have no greater responsibility than to take all necessary steps to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Newport Beach. Focusing on the Southern California fires, the emergency preparedness and recovery plans for the County of Los Angeles, County of Anture, the cities of Calabasas, Westlake, Thousand Oaks, and Malibu, and many others failed. There are many lessons to be learned. Unfortunately, this was not the perfect storm. Our city and surrounding cities experienced droughts, sand down to wind conditions, periods of low humidity, and have urban open space interfaces not unlike those experienced in the burn areas. It is not uncommon for multiple fires to occur simultaneously under these conditions, taxing our emergency response and mutual aid capabilities. What if the city of Newport Beach and not Malibu, what if it was the city of Newport Beach and not Malibu that was threatened and given a mandatory evacuation order at 8:00 AM on a Friday morning? And a segment of the 405 freeway was closed in Irvine? At that time, the 405 and 55 freeways are at or near gridlock. A segment of PCH was closed in both directions. Other segments were opened for egress only. MacArthur Boulevard was closed between PCH and the 73 freeway, as well as other local road closures. Could the citizens of Newport Beach evacuate safely? Thankfully, it was not Laguna Beach. My greatest concerns are the exposure we face from flood, earthquake, and fire. I, like the notice, noted seismologist Lucy Jones, believe that flooding from a major storm event is our greatest risk. In closing, I request the city council immediately take action to review its emergency preparedness and recovery plans to determine the adequacy of these plans for flood, fire, and earthquake disasters, and to reassure the citizens they are in fact safe from these types of events, and that the city of Newport Beach take no action that would increase the risk to its citizens until these plans are deemed adequate. Safety first. I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Ruth Kobiyashi. I live in Harbor Cove, right across the street from my favorite police chief's office. I'm here to thank you for serving our community. I've seen all these last few months, and especially during election season, it's often a thankless job, and I thank all of you. As a Pepperdine graduate, I'm also grateful for our fire department for going up to help the people of Malibu. Some of the old neighborhoods that I used to spend a lot of time in are, are gone. And almost finally, I wanted to just let you know, some of you know that although my last child just graduated from CDM High School this last summer, I'm still saying involved in certain capacities. And you'll be hearing more over the next few months, I'm sure, but they're doing some really great work from a program that I brought down through Stanford that the district has funded that is helping with the overall school climate and mental health. And I'm seeing some really great updates on what's going on there. And it's a combination of commitment from teachers, administrators, parents, and most importantly, students. And even some little things, like for the first time ever, no homework or assignments are being allowed over Thanksgiving, is a game changer for those kids. So, I wanted to make aware of that. And then, my last comment, and, and my question is, I don't know if it's now or later, is on agenda item 13. So, is that now or is that later? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor Duffy, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher, and like Ruth, I had pretty much the same question. I, I have a comment on agenda topic, Roman numeral 19, motions for reconsideration. Are you going to invite comment then?
I think you should just go and make your comments now, Jim.
Okay. When you get to that item, as I started to say this afternoon, I hope you will consider reconsidering the motion or the ordinance about number 2018-18 about the harbor speed limit. That ordinance was introduced on October 9th. It was posted, it was advertised, it had some mistakes in the language. The mistakes were not recognized at that time, but it was posted, it was advertised. You're not allowed to change the language, right or wrong, except to correct a typographical error between the first reading and the second reading. At your last meeting, October 23rd, that again was adopted with the wrong language in it. Subsequent to the adoption of it, the staff took it upon themselves to change the language compared to what the public had seen, both being introduced and being adopted. Now, maybe it's not a big deal, but to me, that is a big deal because it completely takes away any public belief in the integrity of what you do. The public assumes that when you pass something, what you're doing is what you're saying you're doing, not what you wished you did. And the proper course of correction for this would be at this meeting tonight to reconsider your approval of that ordinance and ask the staff to bring back the correct ordinance with the correct language in it for proper adoption, so that you don't have this paper trail where you approved something and then it gets into our municipal code with different language. That would be the correct thing to do. That's what I hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come up.
Andrew Ayers. First, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for your service. Appreciate it for our wonderful city. I want to state that I'm very disappointed that the Planning Commission granted a conditional use permit for another additional auto dealership along our precious Mariner's Mile. It was pointed out to them that it was in the protected area that's not supposed to have more auto dealerships, and it still got passed. And it's very upsetting. And on that note, I would like to put notice that we are focused, citizens are focused on the nominees for the vacated position on the Planning Commission. And I hope our city council will make an effort to reflect citizen opinions when you're making your vote and represent your voters when you're choosing that person for that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. We'll now go to current business. We have one item, and it is an ordinance for creating a sidewalk vending program. Does staff have a report? Yeah, I've seen your report. These people haven't seen it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did make a presentation during the study session with regards to this proposed, our sidewalk vendor ordinance program. If the council would like to see any of those slides from this evening's study session, we'd be happy to do that. Some of the comments we did hear back from the city council were looking, going back and looking at the hours of solicitation because right now, the residential hours are between 8:00 AM and 9:00 PM for the residential parts of town. Some of the other comments we did receive this evening were section D1, page 13-24 would be to update the identification of the Peninsula Boardwalk and also identify the Babo Island Boardwalk. We're happy to go through some additional slides if you'd like or answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments up here? I don't see any. All right. We'll go out to the public on this item. Anyone wish to speak on this item, please come up.
Good evening again. My name is Ruth Kobiyashi, and I appreciate your effort to regulate the street vending as much as possible, understanding the state law that's being pushed down on the cities. I think it would be great if, I read through the entire policy that was published, and I think it would be helpful for residents to understand, kind of in the affirmative, where can we most likely expect to see them? I realize that's a little bit of a guessing game, but trying to visualize what this is gonna be like is hard to do. And I think it would be great to offer some clarity for the residents, and I would love to see this much attention in the future also be put to handling of panhandlers that have exploded in number in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item?
Mayor Duffy, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I have to admit to a certain amount of confusion here, as I am often confused, as I just told you, with connection with ordinance 2018-18, the last one you adopted at the last meeting. The adoption of ordinances is not something that's done casually. You have to get the language correct at the first reading. You have to notify the public that you're considering the ordinance, and then you have to adopt that exact language at the next council meeting or at a subsequent one. We're hearing from the staff, oh, we can change this, we can change that. I think we need to know what the ordinance is before you introduce it at the first reading, which is the agenda item that you have before you tonight. So, I'm not sure if that's what you're doing or not. Beyond that, I wanted to, to respond to a couple of the comments that were made at the study session. We heard that the ordinance had been carefully thought out in the sense that it was a well considered thing that we want to prohibit this sidewalk vending in the civic center because the civic center is a, has an emergency operations center in it, et cetera, et cetera. I wanted to point out an unintended consequence of that. This is on, or could be on, very rare occasion, an emergency center. It usually is a civic center, though, rather than that. We have concerts on the green here, and the vendor could not come to the, to the public concert that we're having. The City Arts Commission might want to have the vendors here. As you may know, we have food trucks that come here, although our ordinance says, I think, that we can't have food trucks operating anywhere in Newport Beach, except we allow them. So, are we planning to have more... So are we planning to have more laws that we just ignore when we don't want them, or should this be thought out more carefully? I think some of you shared the concern of the speaker that you heard this afternoon from Baboa Village, who was concerned about the competition that the vendors were going to cause on the, on the Edgewater Boardwalk there. He certainly had valid concerns. I share his concerns. I think you do, probably. The staff should have pointed out to you, though, that you can't just arbitrarily invent some kind of health, safety, et cetera, concern to do that. The Senate bill that you're trying to follow explicitly says that economic competition is not an objective health, welfare, or safety reason for prohibiting vendors. So I think there's something wrong with that. And then as to the details of it, if you look at Page 13-24, there's a Condition 13 that prohibits vendors from moving their cart off the pathway where they're doing the vending. I personally would think logically that would be a very good thing, that they would move out of the public way, so that they were kind of to the side, rather than right in the middle of the sidewalk. Why are we prohibiting that? Beats me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it might be instructive to have a brief rundown from staff on this. Seems to me there's some interest, and perhaps there's members of the public who missed the study session, and it's not that late, so I don't know if the rest of the council feels the same way, but it's a, for, I think for a lot of people, it's the first time they've heard it.
Well, the map, I think she brought up, was, would have been a, a good start, showing where these are all going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll go ahead, and Ben, we'll go ahead and look, and pull up those maps, and kind of show those areas where are restricted, and those areas that are allowed.
Great, thank you.
And while you're pulling that up, maybe just a quick response. Simone, the, one of the points that Jim had made was the idea that economic competition is somehow motivating any portion of this ordinance. My understanding is that's not the case. So is it correct that competition is not motivating any portion of this ordinance?
No, that's correct, absolutely.
Excellent.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Ben Zadiba with the city's planning division. I'll just go into the locations that are prohibited very briefly, as well as some of the restricted locations. So the prohibited locations are prohibited outright, and that's again because there are unique circumstances. Maybe it's influx of tourists during the summer season, or high flow of pedestrian traffic during those times as well, that could cause an issue if you have a sidewalk vendor obstructing any portion of the designated sidewalk or pathway. So those listed are the Baboa Peninsula Boardwalk, the Baboa Island Boardwalk, or walking trail, as we've called it, the East Baboa Boulevard area between Adams and A Street, which is in Baboa Village, Marine Avenue on Baboa Island. In Cronodomar, we have East Coast Highway between Avocado Avenue and Hazel Drive, and then the Civic Center. So again, to show you spatially where those are, there's an overview map of the city. We'll go into each one individually. So Baboa Island, and again, I'll use my pointer here, bear with me a minute. So prohibited areas, we have Marine Avenue, it's very narrow sidewalks, there's a lot of storefronts and a lot of pedestrian activity, so we're proposing to prohibit it outright there. The boardwalk area, which runs around Little Baboa Island, as well as larger Baboa Island area. The alleys, which are intended for vehicular access and maneuverability, as well as 200 feet from the fire station, to allow appropriate access for the fire truck in the event of an emergency. Again, I would stress that it is allowed generally to have roaming vendors in residential areas, as long as the minimum four-foot clearance around that roaming vendor is being provided, and that's throughout the city. So Baboa Village, again, Baboa Boulevard from Adams to A Street, the Baboa Pier, the oceanfront boardwalk, alleys, parking lots, and beaches are all prohibited. In terms of where it could happen, again, there's a little list of streets and pathways where it could be allowed, subject to certain locational requirements, which we'll go into right after this. Civic Center, in terms of prohibited areas, we're looking at the 100 Civic Center Drive property, which is again where we are today. It includes the parking lots, and as was stated, the city does have an emergency operations center, as well as several key fire and life safety service personnel who may need to access the parking lot to leave the facility at any time. It could be allowed in the park area, there are some wider pathways there, as well as on Avocado Avenue and the west side of MacArthur Boulevard. And once again, roaming vendors would be allowed in residential areas if there are appropriate clearances, and they meet all the separational requirements. Another example, Cronodomar, so it's completely prohibited on the Coast Highway from Avocado Avenue to Hazel Drive, within alleys, in the parking lots, beaches, and again, a 200-foot buffer from the fire station. It could be allowed in Grant Howard Park, there is a pathway there, however, as I pointed out in the study session, currently, the city has a temporary fire station there during construction of Fire Station Number Five, and that would preclude any sidewalk vendors from occurring there today. However, we still allow roaming vendors in residential, which is consistent with state law. And the last specific location example I'll share with you is the McFadden Square area, which as you know, is a hotspot for tourists, especially during the summer, but really at all times of the year. The oceanfront boardwalk is completely prohibited. There's just a lot of two-way traffic, bicycles, pedestrians, skateboarders, rollerbladers, you name it, they're all on that pathway, and we see putting a sidewalk vendor there very dangerous. Alleys also prohibited here, parking lots, beaches, 200 feet from the lifeguard headquarters, which is really important to highlight. Staff put a lot of consideration into that, inasmuch as the lifeguards really, you know, patrol the beach, and they need to have access to it in unrestricted manner. And then lastly, the Newport Pier. There are several areas where it could be allowed. It looks like the sidewalks are eight feet or more there, which would allow sidewalk vendors, stationary sidewalk vendors, and also roaming vendors, once again, are allowed in residential, so long as they meet the separational requirements. I'll go into those requirements very briefly. So there are additional restrictions, as I said, within 200 feet of any police or fire station, lifeguard tower, lifeguard headquarters. We would not allow any sidewalk vendors, we don't want them to interfere with safety personnel. Drilling down, we don't want them within 100 feet of other sidewalk vendors for the purpose of what if they have a queue, or people waiting in line? There could be conflicts there that could impede public access. Another example is a street intersection. Again, a line or, or operations of that sidewalk vendor could obstruct vehicular site distance, which is a health and safety concern. Lastly, I just highlight that we wouldn't want a sidewalk vendor within 100 feet of any emergency services personnel who's actively performing duties. Obviously, they need space, and we don't want interference there. Within 25 feet, we, we wouldn't want a sidewalk vendor to obstruct any access to a fire hydrant in the event of an emergency, or any regular maintenance of that hydrant. Also, any driveway, alley, or entrance to a parking lot garage, again, that relates to vehicular site distance, which is a safety concern. Another thing I'll highlight is within 25 feet of any trash receptacle, bike rack, or similar public use item. Those are really intended to be enjoyed by the public, and having a sidewalk vendor within 25 feet could hinder the use of that item, which is a welfare issue. Lastly, just to highlight a few things, as I kind of touched on, the sidewalk or path must be at least eight feet in width. That is to allow appropriate clearance, which complies with ADA or the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements for persons with disabilities. And then I'll conclude on the fact that stationary sidewalk vendors, once again, are not permitted in any residential area, and that's exclusively residential. So you would not have a stationary sidewalk vendor setting up in a residential area. However, once again, you could have roaming vendors, subject to certain separational requirements, and that is consistent and required by state law.
Mr. Harp, could you just explain briefly how this was prom, how this started?
So currently, the municipal code bans basically the use of any public property for commercial purposes. And the state of California enacted a Senate bill, which in essence allows for street vending activity, provided that it complies with local rules, regulations. And so this is a proposal that looks at kind of all the different issues that we have in the city, as far as, you know, ADA access, making sure that firefighters, lifeguards, and police are able to perform their jobs, and that people are able to enjoy the various areas of the city, while providing the maximum amount of, of ability for people to get, to engage in sidewalk vending activities. So that's kind of how it came about. The state adopted a new Senate bill, and we're basically trying to, to comply with that by adopting a vendor program.
And essentially, we're asking the state to accept this, right?
No, this would be a local law, so we don't need to get the state to, to provide, or sign up on it.
Right. But there could be some concerns of people that we've, some areas like the Civic Center could be, are, you know, off limits when it's not necessarily an entire place of public safety, in terms of interpretation, right?
Well, I think you look at, especially at the Civic Center, and, you know, looking at the public health, safety, and welfare type of issues, you know, the fire department uses this as a staging area. So out here in front, they stage their vehicles from here, they have other equipment that's here. This is actually the fire department's headquarters. So there's a lot going on at this particular location that I think leads to the restrictions that have been set forward, including, you know, having the emergency operations center here. You know, parking garage is very close to the actual Civic Center itself, and there's still opportunities right adjacent to this area where people can engage in vending activities.
Great. And then could we discuss again what constitutes a vendor? There's two types of vendors, there's a roaming vendor and a stationary vendor, is that correct?
Yeah, so there's, like you said, there's two types of vendors. You have stationary vendors, and you have roaming vendors.
The roaming vendors have a cart that's four by four feet?
They don't have to.
They don't have to.
If they do have a cart, it's restricted to four by four, by four.
Okay, wow, I see. Better be able to go here.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. Ben, I think there's questions for you. I've seen enough James Bond movies, I know that there's a vending cart coming down my street in my house, I'm about to be assassinated. In all seriousness, what is a resident supposed to do if they see a vending cart coming down their street? Is there an office we would call to make sure they're in compliance with all the rules? And how likely do you believe it is that this is going to happen at all? I don't suspect it's going to be very frequent.
I'll answer some of that. Councilmember Muldoon, I also have Monique Nevert from our revenue division, she's our licensed supervisor, I think she can elaborate on some of what you're concerned with as well. I do like your anecdote, by the way. So we would have code enforcement officers who would regulate this program. It's largely administered, though, by the revenue division, so I think Monique would be heavily involved. One thing that we touched upon in study session is that permits would have to be conspicuously in plain sight. So it would be really easy for a resident to know if there was a permitted sidewalk vendor who has submitted the basic requirements, such as, we can ask for basic information of that person. So we do know kind of who that person is, and what their background is, to make sure that they are able to obtain a permit. And then from an enforcement standpoint, as I said, we would have code enforcement, there would be an administrative citation process that would go into place if there are any violations, and if they don't have a permit, obviously, they would get cited for not having a valid permit, but it's largely a code enforcement operation. And I just got past the business card, in case anyone ever needs to contact code enforcement, I'll go on the record saying that number's 949-644-3215, and they are a highly responsive group of individuals.
And is there any reason why we excluded the library segue between the Civic Center and the library?
You're talking about from going down the stairs, and going by the generators and all that, is that what you're referencing?
I'm speaking where the credit union entrance is, the back entrance of the library that goes to Bay D.
Oh, that's actually on part of the Civic Center property, which is defined as 100 Civic Center Drive. If you look at the literal property lines, it runs right through that.
So I guess my question is, is there a reason why we didn't consider allowing some on portions of the Civic Center? Because I go to the courthouse pretty often, and I enjoy the fact that you can go to a vending location that makes more sense in a residential street. If we're going to have more opportunity for roaming vendors, I think that there's places where it would be well-suited. I'm just not sure, I understand that a lot of the places, you wouldn't want one because of first responders and the Civic Center, but I'm curious about other communal locations that are city, city property.
Councilmember Muldoon, when we looked at this, we didn't really consider allowing any type of vendors at the library. So from, from a staff consideration, we just looked at the library and the city hall as one Civic Center, so we didn't look at anything further beyond that.
So that, the other locations, Oasis Senior Center, other libraries, what is our policy going to be at that locations, at those locations, excuse me?
So the, the ordinance calls out that they have to be clear within about 100 feet away from those other facilities also.
That's right. So I guess I'm a little puzzled, if they're going to be in our city, I'd rather than be at already public locations where people gather and perhaps would want a meal, than going down residential streets. Now, I don't know that that's really going to happen anyways, but I think I could maybe want to see this come back at a future date, if we're seeing that problem, and vendors are deciding to come to Newport Beach, and we want to put them somewhere where they can conduct business, and they don't bother the residents. But otherwise, I think it's a great report, a lot of thought put into what are acceptable and not based on accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on some of the enforcement aspects that we talked about in the study session, the public speaker, Mrs. Kobiyashi, brought up a very good point. Maybe as we, if this, if this, if the council decides to move this forward and we implement this, I think a more affirmative area, where we target on maps of the city, areas of the city where the carts are permitted, because I think it's really hard looking at the, all the red lines where they're excluded, but just they'll be focused areas where they are permitted. I think that would be more helpful to the potential user. And we, another point, we talked earlier in the study session about Edgewater, so what is your analysis of what will hap, what will Edgewater look like right there in Baboa Village?
So with regards to Edgewater, first of all, that, that portion is actually private property on Edgewater. So our regulations, it'll be difficult to even regulate any part of Edgewater. But our ordinance does preclude or restrict any vendors within 25 feet of a business entrance that has to deal with emergency egress, and also to allow for wheelchair access to those businesses. So I think Edgewater will be covered under any one of those, because it is private property and/or our ordinance has a 25-foot restriction also.
Okay. I think enforcement is going to be difficult, and since, particularly since it's hard, even though people, an enforcement division are, answer emails and such, I know from personal experience, on the weekends. But if we can make this program as easy to comply with as possible, in terms of the areas where it is permitted, I think it will eliminate a lot of confusion from visitors and the pushcart owners and residents alike.
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon. I completely agree. One thing, one point also, is that the revenue division will be handling the permitting side of it, so a lot of questions are already coming to the revenue division. So they'll be fielding a lot of that front-end calls, where our enforcement, code enforcement will be handling more of those field site visits.
Mr. Avery?
Again, from the study session, the only thing I might add, just to be clear to the public, is that we will revisit this at some point, once we get public feedback and get a sense of how it's going, and we can make adjustments and respond to, to the comments. And so I know that's the full intention of everyone up here, because at first blush, it's sort of, what the heck, and how's this going to look? But we're pretty confident it's going to work out okay, but we certainly want to adjust where needed going forward, after it's run its course for a little while. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim O'Neill?
I move staff recommendation.
I'll second it. Clarification, does that include your modifications of the Baboa Boardwalk, Baboa Island Boardwalk?
Indeed.
So, yeah, just So, yeah, just to confirm, we would make those changes to 5.97020B. The Balboa Island Walking Trail would now be referred to as the Balboa Island Boardwalk. And under 5.97.0204, it would just be referred to as the Ocean Boardwalk. And then we'd make those same changes, kind of where it appears throughout the ordinance.
Correct. That's my interpretation. Is that this... is that okay to the second? Okay.
All right. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2018-19, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, creating a program to regulate and permit sidewalk vending pursuant to California Senate Bill 946. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right. I believe we have a councilman Avery would like to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting of the city council, the city council approved ordinances numbers 2018-17 and 2018-18. These ordinance made changes to the Newport Beach Municipal Code provisions related to the regulation of the harbor. And these ordinances overlap regarding specific provisions of the municipal code related to the appeals process. Given the overlap in the provisions, some of the last-minute changes, it would be best if we started over and reconsidered both of these ordinances to make sure everyone is on the same page. So I make the motion this evening that we won reconsider ordinance number 2018-17 and And two, that both ordinances be brought back to the city council for first reading at the November 27, 2018 city council meeting. And I'd like to add, that's the end of the motion. And if I could add, just that I think all of us up here weren't comfortable with it. And I know there were some issues with staff. We all have sort of a part in, you know, in a little fumble like this. But our job is absolutely to be transparent as we can with the public and these kinds of things. And it's very good that we have the public paying attention. And I know staff are going to redouble their efforts to work to make sure this sort of thing is probably going to happen again, but we've got to do a better job. And it's sometimes we drop the ball. And I'm speaking how I feel here. So... and that's fine. We just are... I think the council is unanimous in this, to try and get this finally straightened out. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just briefly, you previously recused yourself from this item. Mayor Duffield, it's probably best you recuse yourself from the reconsideration as well. And I know Councilman Piotta also had recused himself, because he was absent when it was first considered.
Okay. Mayor Protim O'Neill.
Oh, Mr. Harp, is your advice that the two councilmembers who had previously recused themselves, recuse themselves at this time?
Well, it's definitely for Mayor Duffield, since you wouldn't... you didn't participate on any portion of it, because you'd recused yourself related to financial conflict. It's probably best that you recuse yourself from this portion as well, based on your business interests. However, Councilmember Piotta is in a different situation. But he had recused himself, because he hadn't been present for the first reading. He's welcome to recuse himself as well if he wants to, but it's not the same financial conflict.
All right. Thank you. I'll recuse myself.
So just for the record, I'll note that Mayor Duffield's recusing himself based on his financial interests. He did not participate in either ordinance. And Councilmember Piotta had abstained from the first reading... oh, sorry, had not been present for the first reading of the ordinances. So he abstained from the second reading. He's also recusing himself.
So I'll note real briefly, I wasn't here for the last one, for the last meeting, so I won't... I don't think I'm able to make a second. Do we have a second for the... Okay, Mr. Muldoon with a second. How... do we have any questions of staff before we go out to public comment? Seeing none, we'll go out to public comment on this item. Are there any public comments on this motion for reconsideration? This is what you asked for, Jim.
Mayor Protim O'Neill? I made my comment earlier. I would just add, thank you.
Welcome. Any other public comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Let's vote.
The motion for reconsideration passes unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. Pass the reins back to the mayor.
All right. And now I'd like to have Mayor Protim O'Neill with our adjournment.
We adjourn tonight in memory of Newport Beach Reserve Officer Steve Shogel. Steve was a reserve police officer with the Newport Beach Police Department for over 27 years. He worked assignments in patrol, traffic, and most recently, support services, where he developed the Newport Beach Police Department NARCAN program. The program has not only saved many lives since being implemented, but also serves as a county and nationwide model. Steve was a role model for us in dignity, work ethic, and friendship. He will be greatly missed. A funeral service in his memory will be held on Monday, November 19, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. at Church of Our Fathers Forest Lawn Cypress. Steve is survived by his wife Darlene and his daughter, Monaire. We'll miss you, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you. We are adjourned.